...call, special meeting, special meeting for budget workshop into order. We do have a quorum with Director Thomas Skyping in. The first item is citizens' comments. This is an opportunity for citizens to address the board on any matter whether or not it is posted on the agenda. The board is not permitted to take action on or discuss any presentation made to the board at this time concerning an item not listed on the agenda. The board will hear presentations on specific agenda items prior to the board addressing these items. You may speak up to three minutes or the time limit determined by the present or presiding officer. Do I have any citizens that would like to make comments? Anyone? I see no one. Okay. We're moving on to special session. Consider and take appropriate action regarding fiscal year 2017 draft budget. Nothing? Can we adjourn now? Okay, what we'll do to keep this moving is we'll start at the first page.
Kevin, actually, if, before we get into the budget budget, the finance has a little presentation on the cash reserves to kind of help you all as you go through the budget, where you're looking at the cash reserves. There's been some questions about that. So if you don't mind, I'll get Terry to give her presentation.
Okay, let me make this statement and then she can give the presentation, okay?
Okay.
Is that all right?
Yep.
Okay. To keep this thing moving along, as I said, what we'll do is while we're going through the budget after the presentation, we'll start at the first page. There's tables that are associated with each page, so we'll flip back to those. We won't go to any other departments or anything until that department is agreed upon. Everyone have, everyone okay with that? Yes? Yes, okay. Ask any question. Once that's done, if there's another department that's tied in any way to a department we already spoke, we'll go back at that time. But once we hit a department and everything's agreed upon, we'll keep going forward. So we aren't going back and forth, back and forth. Okay? Okay, we have a presentation?
We have a presentation for the board on the district cash reserves. There's been some questions and we wanted to take an opportunity to try and answer some of those questions. This is a snapshot as of yesterday of the district cash bank accounts. We have earmarked accounts for various purposes such as construction accounts, such as debt service accounts, such as the separate cash reserve account. Those are listed under the earmarked accounts. And then we have our operating accounts. You can see that we have nine million earmarked and we presently have 1.2 million in the operating accounts. The governmental accounting standards board, GASBIE, we have some GASBIE accounts and the GASBIE fund designations were created in order to fund replacement assets or infrastructure. And the district currently has four separate assigned replacement accounts with the following balances. We have the town elevated storage tank, $90,000. We have the IT, which is the technology replacement, $50,893. We have the water replacement, $60,000. And we have the fire department, $125,127. All four of those are combined for a total of $326,000.
Quick question for you, Terry.
Sure.
The, oh, I'm sorry. On the fire, 125, 127, I'm assuming this is before the expenditures that we approved. So it's, it's at this level because we haven't started to receive invoices for the work being done there.
If you will look when I show you the next screen, you'll see that reduced by those expenditures we expect to be coming in.
Okay.
That'll be on the next slide.
Terry, this replace, these replacement accounts, how do they fall under the fund balance five categories?
They're in fund 137.
But are, I mean, are they non-spendable, non-spendable or just restricted or are they committed?
They're assigned.
They're committed?
No, they're assigned.
They're assigned. So they're four, category four, assigned fund balances.
Uh-huh. And a little bit further in the presentation, we will show you the difference.
Yeah. I just wanted to get.
Sure.
Let me ask a question about the, the, assume this was in the budget for '16. You budgeted these last year at this time?
Yes, they're budgeted every year at the beginning of the year. They're, the board looks at that and assigns or commits whatever is intended.
When you move money into the GASBIE accounts, what's the debits and credits? What do you do when you move money into GASBIE?
Renee's gonna answer that.
It's a debit to fund 137 cash and a credit to 135 cash.
Okay.
There's like, there's a...
So it's just a movement of, between cash accounts?
Cash accounts, there's actually, I think there's a, an expense transfer out on one and there's a transfer in on the other and in the, the whole picture.
Right.
It nets.
Okay.
GASBIE itself, what we use for GASBIE is a separate fund. It is fund 137.
Right.
For the district.
Okay.
And we do physically move the money.
Yeah.
And once funds go into the GASBIE accounts, they flow from year to year. That's a maintenance, maintain type fund, right?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Okay, so the GASBIE account balances, to answer Greg's question, the board has approved the following purchases from GASBIE funds. $18,379 for aerial sewer crossing I-beams to be paid from GASBIE IT, $8,000 for updated water sewer system map development from GASBIE Water, $43,033.50 for bunker gear from GASBIE Fire, $7,918 for purchase of thermal imaging camera after the trade-in from GASBIE Fire, and $71,000 for maintenance and repair of fire station items from GASBIE Fire. So the following balances are what will remain after these board-approved purchases are paid from these GASBIE funds. We will have $90,000 in the town elevated storage tank. We will have $32,513.58 in technology replacement. And speaking of that, that is going to be brought before the board to ask them to reallocate that to the sewer, GASBIE Sewer. That's what was discussed at the last board meeting, but that's not addressed in this presentation because the board hasn't voted on that. The water replacement will have a balance of $52,000 and the fire department will have a balance of $3,175.50.
What is the elevated storage tank for?
That is to maintain and do...
It's for, for a major maintenance of painting it.
So you're accumulating, because you paint it about every 10 years, so you're accumulating.
Yes. The, the other tanks, the, the two ground storage tanks and the east tank, we have a tank maintenance contract on them, but we do not have one on the town tank because it's not the district's tank. And so the board, a couple of years ago, decided to put basically one-tenth of the estimated cost for a complete tank rehab, because it's about every 10 years you'll have to do it.
Right.
To, you know, strip it down and paint it and clean it and, and any kind of maintenance on it. So that's the point of that.
Okay.
So the district cash reserve account, there's been some questions. The district does have a cash reserve account. It has a current balance of $180,073.79. This account was created in fiscal year '16 based on the district cash reserve policy which the board created, which was created and approved by the board in fiscal year '15. The cash reserve account is to be available to address one-time emergencies and unanticipated expenditure requirements. The board may withdraw funds from the cash reserve only when in its sole discretion, the board determines at least one of the following. A, there is a need for emergency expenditures, or there's an unexpected revenue reduction that would result in a negative general fund ending fund balance. The unassigned general fund balance, the district GASBIE reserve accounts are to be used for planned replacements. And in the general fund, as of August 11th, there was $2,889,665.08 in the unassigned fund balance. Fund balances are not cash.
And you might say, the reason they're not cash is they don't pick up the fact that you have accounts receivable and accounts payable.
Well, they're not cash because there's different reasons that, let me go a little bit further and then we can circle back to that. Fund balances are the cumulative number of revenues over expenditures for a number of years. The fund balance number combined with the current revenues expenses changes as it's impacted by the net difference between revenues and expenses. So currently, as of yesterday, the current amount of revenues over expenses was $1,596.8626. So when you combine that with the unassigned fund balance, the calculated unassigned general fund balance right now is $1,298,978.82.
Now, isn't it basically true that if you, you could use the fund balance as a cash if you didn't have payables and receivables? The two would be equal, would they not?
Well, there's other things that go into it, such as there's the...
Prepaid.
The prepaid's, the liabilities. There's, there's more that goes into it than just that. So...
Okay.
That is your equity, basically the equity that you have. So if that becomes a, a debit balance, that means you're, you're in a loss situation.
So that's the, oh, I apologize, go ahead.
Just back one slide for a moment. District cash reserve accounts, those fall under unassigned fund balances, correct, for GASBIE?
$180?
Yeah, I know what he's, um, that's a cash account. It's not a fund balance.
Okay, so it's not, it's not included in the GASBIE account?
No, it would be included in the...
It's not in the GASBIE account.
It's not in the GASBIE.
It's in the 135 fund. GASBIE accounts are in 137.
Okay, well, I just trying to figure out, when we talk about reserves and I look at GASBIE as reserves, I'm trying, I'm trying to figure.
It's replacement. GASBIE is replacements.
Okay.
There's specific accounts for specific items.
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Governmental fund balances do not always represent cash in the bank or funds available for expenditures. Fund balances are divided into the five categories listed below. Non-spendable fund balances, oh, yes, Jim.
Go ahead, Jen.
Go ahead.
Terry, just one quick question. If I understood what you just said, the current reserves less any money's, you know, committed is $1,298,978. Did I get that correct?
Yes, that's in fund balance. That is correct.
The total fund balance.
That's the unassigned.
Unassigned.
Fund balance.
Correct. That's exactly how I understood it. Thank you.
Okay. So there are five categories of fund balances. There's non-spendable fund balances, restricted fund balances, committed fund balances, assigned fund balances, and unassigned fund balances. Non-spendable fund balances are not available to be spent as they are in a non-spendable form. For example, prepaid's, amounts that are paid in advance for whatever reason. Restricted fund balances are limited to be spent for a specific purpose such as construction accounts, debt service accounts, reserved for bond covenants. Committed fund balances are committed for the, for a specific purpose as a result of an action of the board, such as budgeted capital improvements. Assigned fund balances reflect district's intent to use money for a specific purpose. It can be budgeted capital improvements, but it can be changed without board action. It can be assigned by the general manager. Unassigned fund balances are available to finance monthly operating expenditures. Factors relating to cash reserves. Cash reserves have been utilized in the past years before fiscal year '12 in order to keep the water sewer rates low. Fort Worth water increases were not passed through in totality to customers in an effort to keep the rates low. Emergency water sewer repairs were done with unbudgeted cash reserves. Cash reserves have been slowly depleting and need replenishing.
Okay.
Our current...
I got a quick question. On the, after you take the signed and all the committed away from that, it's 2 million something number, right?
No.
What was the 548.77 number?
That was last, that was in June. Now we're in, we're looking at August. August isn't complete, but...
What's that, what's, you don't know what that net number is then? Like the equivalent of the 548?
It's 1.2 million dollars.
Okay, what you said before.
It was, yeah. But now that is not accounting for if we had to pay 300,000 in customer water deposits that are a liability to the district. So if we had to pay that, it would come out of a cash account. It would come out of that 1.2 million dollars.
Right. And last month, it was like 2,196 and then the net was 548 after you take away the prepaid's.
After we took away the expenses we had.
And all that. Okay.
Yes, sir.
Couple, couple of questions. On the fund balance discussion there, committed fund balances, I understand for a specific purpose as a result of the board action, the board can change that, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The assigned fund balances, once again, it says reflects district's intent to use money for a specific purpose. That would be placed there by a board action, correct?
No, that can be placed there by the general manager in assigned.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't understand that. Didn't realize that.
That's, committed is, is requires board action. Assigned does not require board action. It, it requires a commitment that the general manager can make.
Okay.
Anything else? So, so right now, if we take actual reserve and replacement accounts, we have a total reserve slash replacement balance of about $350,000, which is the 180 that's in the cash reserve account plus the remaining balance after all the other previously approved dispersals, which is around 177,000 some odd dollars.
That is correct.
That smells about right.
That, I didn't do the number.
You didn't do the math, but that.
But you sound, it sounds like you did the math correctly.
You're, you're adding what's left in GASBIE, which is the replacement with the reserve.
Plus the 180.
Plus the 180.
Right, yes.
Okay.
Okay. And so that is the, that's the end of the presentation. Any other questions?
Anybody? Jim, you have anything?
I, oh, Jim.
Thomas. You have any other question?
No, I actually, I can't see the charts, but I've tried to take, I've got a whole page of notes and I think I'm on track with what you said.
Okay. Jim Hayes, do you have some?
Yeah, the, I think we put 200,000 in the budget to supplement cash reserves.
There's 200...
On both sides.
On both sides, for water and for sewer.
Okay, 400. And we were trying to get in a five-year period up to 4 million.
Yes.
Because roughly expenditures are around 8 million, so half of that's 4 million, if you want a 50% target.
Yes.
So 400,000, if you were gonna try to do, in five years, you're gonna try to get to 4 million, you're starting at, what, 180, is it?
180.
Okay, so technically you should almost do 500,000. Let's see, five times, no, 800,000 a year. We're doing 200 because of constraints on, 4, I'm sorry, 400 because we're constrained on expenditures that have to be made, I guess you put it that way.
Yes.
Okay, I just want everybody to understand, we're replenishing about half what we'd really like to replenish.
Yes.
Anybody else? Bill?
No, I was just gonna say, when we look at, I don't, I don't think it's a discussion for right here, but when we look at the amount we need to replace, what, what our desired goal is for GASBIE or for reserves, I think we need to look at that 50% factor that you're using to evaluate that and see if that's really a...
Yeah, what they, AWD suggests for mature mud is 100%. We cut it in half for the, this mud.
Yeah, one time we were down like in the 30 or something. Is that correct?
Yeah, we were. In fact, we're pretty low now.
Yeah.
But the point is, 50 is about half of what those mature muds around the Houston area. But as Gregory pointed out, we don't have hurricanes up here, so they're in a little more danger than we are.
Yeah.
For catastrophic failure.
We have tornadoes.
Well, I think, I think, you know, I think one of the things we have to look at is, I think the term is seasonal reserves. We need to get, we need to get a number established for that and then tie that in with the rest of our GASBIE reserves and, and look at the, look at the reserve picture from that perspective.
What was that again?
Seasonal, it's called seasonal, I believe it's called seasonal reserves. It's basically...
What's the definition of seasonal reserves?
I think, my understanding is, is one of the things that we need to budget and allow for is a wet year, because a wet year cuts into our revenues.
Right.
And so we take a look at what our operating expenses are. That doesn't mean buying water, because if you got a wet year, you're not buying the water. But you still have the employee costs that you have to cover. You have all the other costs that you have to cover.
You're right. We, we've always encompassed that in the cash reserve picture.
Yeah, so...
We've recognized that one of the large hits you could have on your cash reserves is having a wet year.
Yes.
Been fairly wet this year.
And so based on that, I mean, we need to determine that number and have a seasonal reserve set aside, because, I mean, you could have a seasonal reserve issue and then you could also have an issue.
I think we've done it without calling it seasonal reserves, but we have past history that would demonstrate what kind of a percentage hit you get on revenue if it rains all the time.
I think it was around 30%. I mean, it was a significant increase.
Yeah, there's a, we've had wet years in the past and we did, in fact, lose revenue.
Yeah.
For, against forecasts. So there's...
You mentioned the GASBIE, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry and Jennifer, that's for replacement items, right?
Yes.
I think what they're talking about is the general fund.
Reserve.
Yeah, we are.
I just want to correct you on that.
It's a, it's a designated, it's, it would be a designated reserve. It would be designated for the purpose of a seasonal problem.
But it's not, it wouldn't be considered a GASBIE one?
No, it's not GASBIE. It's...
Because you mentioned GASBIE, I just want to make sure.
You're taking the...
General.
General fund cash.
Jim Thomas?
Yeah, Kevin, I just, if this would be helpful to, to Bill and Greg, back to what Jim Hayes was saying a minute ago. For a number of years, we ran with a reserve at 35% and tried to hold it pretty much at that number. Then, what Jim is saying is true. When in a, in an AWD session quite several years ago, it came out that we were really running quite low. And even when we consulted with our own financial people, they said, yeah, that's kind of low. So that's, that was why the effort was made to try to move it up to 50%, which is what Jim is talking about. For just historical perspective, and I, when I get home, I can tell you the exact year. In my history on the mud boards, we've had one and only one tax increase. That was a one penny tax increase and it was caused by what Bill's talking about. We had a, it wasn't a wet year, it was a crazy wet year. It didn't stop raining. We didn't generate any water revenues and the next year we had to raise the taxes one penny to generate the revenue we had to have to pay bills.
Okay, thank you for that information. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, we're done the presentations and stuff. Okay, so we can move on to the budget, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Jim, we're moving on to the budget. You have your budget packet with you?
Yes, I've got it online. So now as I look at things, my screen's gonna disappear, but I, but I think you'll still be able to see me. And as soon as I find what you're on, I'll bring the screen back up.
Okay. Do you, do you need a?
No, the way, the way, the way mine is set up is if I go, if I move over and open up the, the packet, the screen just, you know, it just disappears and goes down to the toolbar. And as soon as I click on it, it'll come back.
Okay. If you have a question, just unmute and come back, okay?
Jennifer.
And we'll address you.
Okay, so if I, if I hold my hand up like this, you can't see me?
I can see if I turn that way, but if you just unmute, I can hear any background noise and I'll turn that way.
I'll, I'll hold my hand up and clear my throat or something to get you to the camera.
Okay. Okay, we're, when Jennifer comes back, we'll start. I think she's getting someone. Okay, everybody have their packet in front of them, correct? Okay. The first page, anyone have any question with the word trophy club municipal utilities? Okay. What you see in front of you is a budget summary and we'll continue to go back to that probably. So does anyone have any questions on that page or what it relates to? The tax rate, just as a summary, it looks like the tax rate's going down about, what, .0056 or something like that? Is that correct? I guess the...
I do have...
Kevin, I do have one quick question.
Yes?
The, the total tax rate dropped about 3.9 cents. Now, we're gonna cover in detail later what caused that.
Well, yeah, but it's, that's just the tax, the fire is actually going the other way a little bit.
Yeah, the fire, the fire went up, but I guess it shocked me a little bit with the, with the sewer plant coming online and having to pay for that thing.
Oh, that's just a pity.
And part of that being tax revenues, I, I was just, I was a little surprised that we were able to take the taxes down. That's wonderful. Don't misunderstand. And as we, as you explain it as we go along, I, that'll be great.
Okay. Anyone have any questions on that?
I just want to comment on the nine and a half million dollars of expenditures. We just got through, I just got through talking about 8 million. It's not 8 million anymore. It's 9 million. Okay.
Okay, Director Rose?
I go down here to where it says miscellaneous income. And in the comments, it says scrap sales, utility billing, miscellaneous charges. I was wondering if the 15% penalty number is included in there?
No.
No.
Okay.
That's in penalties above 135.47025.
Okay, then let's, 135...
47025.
I still, that, okay. So looking then at penalties, I understand there's some discussion now that we are capturing 15% of...
Okay. I apologize for interrupting, but you're going into the water department already and I think that's covered. This is the summary page and...
Okay.
We can, if you don't mind, can you hold that to the water?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And I know exactly where you're going, because I had that same question.
Okay.
Okay, we're on the general fund page. Okay? Does anyone have any questions on that page?
I think back to your question, right?
Page one?
I think now he's going to page two.
Well, I'm in the general fund. If you look in the top left-hand corner, it's page two, yeah.
Page two.
Yeah, general fund. Okay, I had a, a question on property tax delinquent, the 1275 collected at this time.
We don't have a budget number for that because we don't know what we're going to collect, but we do collect it. So if there are delinquent penalties that come through, this is where we book them to. But there's not a budgeted number because we have no way to know what's going to be paid.
Okay, so out of all that, all the taxes, year-to-date, collected 568878, correct?
Yes.
Right.
And the delinquent is only 1275?
Yes.
That's pretty good. And the fire assessment is in the fire section, correct?
Yes.
Okay. The penalties, 119, 260, I believe that's what Director Rose was talking about, correct?
Yes.
And I, I thought it was in the water, but it's actually in the general fund.
Well, because what you're looking at at the top here is revenue. All the revenues for all the departments is up here at the top on this page.
That's where you, you can address your 15% concern on the storm drain and on the trash.
Okay. So, so basically, as we look at the procedure of going forward, if I'm looking, if I have questions on things here on this particular page and it's got a schedule out beside it, I should delay until I get to that schedule to talk about it.
I said that earlier, that sometimes, like this says schedule so-and-so. We can ju, go to the schedule, because the schedule is a backup for this line item. But we aren't gonna go to another department.
Okay.
You know, unless it's tied somehow to what you're looking... You know, unless it's tied somehow to what you're looking at.
That schedule's on page nineteen.
Okay, thank you.
The, uh.
And I, it's so tiny, I can't.
What we charge the town Trophy Club for including their billing on our bills is I assume it's that fourteen thousand four hundred, about halfway down the page.
We, we had not charged them in the past. This is a new line item for us to begin charging them. But yes, that is the line item that you're.
We didn't charge them in the past for that service?
No.
Okay.
Okay, real quick, Jim, I'll get to you in a second, okay? Jim, I'll get to you in a second. Let me just clarify, this one nineteen, two sixty, make sure everybody's on the same page. That's for the water late fees, correct?
That is for penalties assessed on the bills.
On the bill. The bill includes storm drains and trash from the city, okay? Plus the refuge tax. It comes to twenty-one point one seven. Does that sound right?
Somewhere around there.
Excuse me?
That sounds about right.
Okay, and fifteen percent of that is about three dollars and thirty cents, correct? Okay, so what is it? Three thirty. Then you have water and sewer, which is our part. There's no tax on that. Obviously, the majority of the late fees would go to the water or sewer. But what we've been doing on S T W, the way it's programmed now, is it's been charging fifteen percent on the complete bill. Would, my suggestion is, is, and I've spoke to, spoke to a council person that agrees to this, but is, you know, we don't, we shouldn't be charging late fees on storm drains and trash, okay?
It may be that the software, I don't know that we've checked into that, but it may be the software won't allow us to split that off.
I, I wouldn't.
I think it can. I think, they, always they can. It may take a programming requirement. But there's lots of fees that you don't charge late fees for. If we were collecting for a meter or something, you can set to where it's not charged a penalty. I've never seen a billing software that won't do that. And I think that's what my resolution, and I only learned about this really yesterday, I guess, that, or day before, that at the council meeting, that was discussed. That there, that the late fees are being charged towards the drainage and, or what is it? Storm drainage and trash fees. So in my mind, I kind of calculated that it's about three dollars and thirty cents per bill. So we would need to kind of, if we look at that Schedule G F D, you can go and see how we kind of calculate the late fees is based on. This is not just late fees, that hundred and nineteen, it's also shut offs. There's charges for, for when they go beyond the late fee and they get their service disconnected. There's a fee for that. So what we'll have to do is kind of back into it and we can say, there's an average of, you know, thirty-eight bills per month or something that gets charged a late fee, whatever that may be, and back that out of this dollar value here. And then talk to S T W about if it's a matter of just turning off the late fee on those two rate codes or if it's going to require a programming change. So the, on that, I think the staff will need direction on, will we absorb the cost of the programming or how do we want to do that?
Well, on this, we're, you just went through exactly what I was getting at. That number next needs to drop down when you figure out whatever number the trash and the storm drains are. And I forgot about you, Jim, okay? Based on that amount, I think it came to around fourteen thousand, a little over fourteen thousand or something like that. And depending on what that amount is, I'd be open to absorb it and then do the programming change. We just need to find out from S T W what that cost is. Okay, let me go to Director Thomas first. Go, Jim.
Kevin, thanks. Look, I'll try to do a better job of jumping in. I, I kind of patiently waited and y'all got past the light item I wanted to question.
Okay, we can go back.
Jennifer, Jennifer, on the twelve seventy-five that is remaining delinquent property taxes, are we still using the same legal organization that we've used for the past several years to collect taxes? Because they, whoever we're using is doing a darn good job.
Yes, it's the same company.
Okay, and who is that again?
It's that Purdue Brandon something, something.
Purdue Brandon. Another name. It's three names, Purdue Brandon something.
Well, whoever they are, they have just done a marvelous job.
Okay, Director Rose?
I think that we need to have a town input on how that fifteen percent, that three dollars and thirty cents is handled. I mean, the decision on their part could be, yes, we want that charged. Or the decision could be, no, we don't want it charged. If they want it charged, then it's just a matter of us transferring it across to them after we charge it.
That would be very difficult because you're, you, you can't, it's not going to be separated out, a penalty of that amount. Somebody's going to have to manually go in and say, this amount of this bill is, if it's, for example, say it's a commercial and their, their late fees more because their bill's more. Their trash is more, their drainage fees more. So they would have to go physically calculate out for every single account every month. And I, I don't think that's going to be feasible. It, it, you can't separate the late fees. It's either a cumulative late fee or it's separated. So, you know, but it, but you can turn them on and off. So we could just turn off the late fee or have them programmed to where you can. But I'm about ninety percent sure you'll be able to just basically turn the switch off.
If they really want that fifteen percent on sewer and, or the other one, trash, let's give them forty-four hundred bills and they can go through all the bills and calculate to what their piece of it is. If they want it that bad, let them do it.
Well, another thing that, and correct me if I'm wrong, there's, there's people out there that only pay a portion of their bill. So they have a carryover. Do you charge the fifteen percent again on the balance?
The penalty's on the unpaid balance.
Right, so.
So if they don't pay it.
It's not, you can go through these bills and there's so much late, but some of those lates might be accumulated from the prior months. So it might be more than three thirty, what I'm getting at. I mean, it'd be an accounting nightmare. And again, at this time, the town does not have anything on their books as far as a late fee penalty for trash or storm drains. And they also do not have any deposit required for those accounts. So when people leave, they eat the money, basically, so. And that, you know, don't quote, you know.
Yeah, but my point would be, it would be a town decision on how they would like it.
We have no change on that, but if they want to do late fees on their own, that's fine. On our side, it'd be an accounting nightmare to keep up with it. Okay, moving, moving on, does anyone have anything else on this? Okay, I'll bring something else up then. On seventeen, let's see, well, you don't have, on town, on the utility billing contract, do we have an agreement with Stephen or where we add on that to twelve hundred monthly? Because there's no, there's fourteen forty budgeted, but that, is that coming back to us? They've approved it?
Well, my understanding is that that was what the penalty question was about, that.
Okay.
And so, but I, he didn't indicate that they had a problem with that amount. He did say, we're going to meet, I guess, next week to kind of go over this. But he had an i- he said, one of the council members had an idea of that we collect the late fees and deduct the fourteen four hundred till it's deducted and then turn the rest over to the town. But as I'm saying, that's not going to work. It's because we, we would have to manually go look at every single late bill and calculate out the late fee and then that their portion of the late fee. And that is going to be far too time-consuming and too much staff time to make it worthwhile. So it would just have to be turned off. So we can certainly do that, just turn off the late fees one way or another. But I, but it's not going to be possible to separate it out. So, so I think, he, he in no way indicated that they had a problem with the twelve hundred a month, is what I'm getting at.
I, I think one of their, their solutions for, was to, was to say, well, based on you guys getting net revenue effectively, don't charge us the twelve hundred dollars a month. Kind of weird idea to simplify things. Do we have any confidence or any, I guess, yeah, I guess confidence that that number, that that fifteen percent will exceed fourteen grand a year? Do we have any way to kind of do a smell test to say, you know what? We're talking apples, it was something that's likely to be awash? Is there any way to kind of get to that?
We can look at.
Historical data.
Yeah, we can look at, you know, an average of how many late bills we have per month. And that they're residential maybe and say, if, say it were fifty a month, I don't know. And fifty times three dollars is, what, a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yeah, yeah, a hundred and fifty.
So that would be the amount, a hundred and fifty dollars per month if there were fifty late bills, but there's probably more than that. So say there's a hundred late bills at three dollars a piece, that's three hundred dollars a month. So I don't think it's going to get to the twelve hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
But I, I mean, but we can, but to answer your question, yes, we could kind of get a idea of how many late bills we do per month and multiply it by, I'm coming up with three thirty because I looked in the, at the agreement and the drainage fee for residential is six dollars and the trash was like fifteen dollars, which comes up to about twenty-one. So fifteen percent of twenty-one dollars is about three dollars.
And the only reason why I asked that question, because if it ended up looking like maybe it was so washed in, maybe you just say, you know what, we call it even and move on. But if we're going to, if it's, you know, four hundred dollars a month and this is twelve hundred, then.
Good.
I'd say.
You're very good, Greg, because it's about four hundred and fifty dollars. Because I, I'm, I'm sorry, it was four hundred and fifty late fees. So, but times three dollars is one thousand three hundred and fifty.
And so it seems like we collect about thirteen hundred and fifty dollars per month in late fees. Does that, does that sound about right? We're collecting about thirteen hundred, thirteen, fourteen hundred?
For the town portion he's talking about.
Right, well, I'm looking at like the past eight months and the late notices have averaged from five hundred and twenty-nine down to three hundred and seventy-one with about four hundred and something in the middle. So I guess that could be a fair statement.
I, I guess then, one of the things, to me, seemed like the simplest thing to do is that, now, some months we may make a little money, some months we may lose a little money. I think one of the things that they wanted to do was say, you know what? You guys keep that money, don't charge us for utility billing and then let's just call it even. Is that a possibility to look at just doing that? Look at it, well, I guess, unless the number of late bills drop down to a really, really low number. It seems like any step we take will either cause us money or work. And it seems like to me, it's probably not worth it because it seems like it's about right.
Yeah, I think we could definitely look at doing that. That way, we still need the agreement that, and then the agreement will need to write in there that the town agrees that we will charge a late fee and, and that we set the late fee. Because today, the late fee is fifteen percent. I can't tell you what the late fee will be five years from now. It may be dropped to ten percent, it may be increased to twenty-five percent. But that will have to be at the authority of the board. So we could, so what, what we're kind of going to is modifying the agreement. And I can certainly get with Stephen and work on that.
We don't have legal representation here, but I'd like to know, there's no town policy on storm or refuge late fees? Wouldn't they have to adopt a policy to say that?
I don't know.
You know, our late, the late fees on storm and drain will line up with what the utility district has?
I think that would be something that would be in our, their purview and not ours.
That's what I'm saying. But if we're charging it, they have to have something that says we can charge it on their behalf.
Right, and, and for to, for our sake, that's why I'm saying it would have to state it in the agreement.
You're going to talk to Stephen, so those are the points you can bring to Stephen.
Yes.
Yeah.
Greg's concerned and illegality portion of it. Anything else on that item? Jim, Thomas?
No, I'm, I'm good.
Okay, moving on through the rest of it, anyone have anything else on the general fund page?
Down in general fund expenses.
Okay.
I tried, one of the, one of the, right up front. I had a problem. I know the mud has budgeted using this presentation for more than one year. The problem I have with this presentation is it doesn't allow you to capture any trend information nor any correlation with what I would call real-world expenditures. We have a budget before us that was built on a prior budget. The only real number that we have in this budget are the current expenses. As of six thirty sixteen. I took this budget and laid the current expenses or attempted to back against twenty fifteen, which is a complete year budget. And then I highlighted those items which the expenditures in twenty fifteen were ninety percent or less. And so when I look at, for example, and these are all discussion items. When I look at the retirement five zero zero two zero line, we show a seventy-five thousand dollar, that's amended budget one. We budget next year at eighty thousand dollars. And yet so far this year, we've only spent fifty thousand dollars with only three months remaining. So my question becomes, is this a linear expenditure? Or is this an expenditure that's done quarterly or something that you would expect to be, to fulfill in this particular case to meet the seventy-five thousand five seventy-one? Because in the prior year, we did not meet, did not come to ninety percent. Terry, please.
Bill, may I?
I have some more question. I'm assuming you're on sheet two and.
I am.
When I fi- when I go to, that's, I'm on the water and distribution.
That's what I'm on to.
And if I go the fifth one down, retirement, I'm seeing numbers twenty-five thousand twenty-seven. So I want to make sure I understand what you're on.
Are you getting it off the schedule? Is that where you came from?
I'm sorry, I'm in the fire department. That was the ne- that was the next one down in the page.
I would like to make a statement, if I may. When we put this budget together every year, we look at a whole lot of actual numbers, not just proposed numbers. We put in the actual water that was used for the past three years and it's averaged. So there's actual water numbers in here. And I go through every line item in this budget and I ask, for example, Mike, how much will we need this year for chemicals based on what's going on right now? So that's how we've attempted to put this budget together. It's not projected based on some percentage of increase, two percent, three percent. It's not done that way. It's based on what we truly think the actual expenses will be, line by line by line. And where you were speaking about retirement, the retirement line in itself is impacted if you lose staff, if you gain staff. I mean, we're proposing what we would have in retirement with a full staff. And, and then the rate changes, January one for T C D R S. So we have three months of the old fiscal year rate and then, or the calendar year. And then we have nine months at the newer rate. So that's all on the sheet. That's the backup for this.
That's reason for, and I picked on retirement because I figured it was one which would probably be close to the percentage that was forecast. And that's why I brought that one up particularly.
Okay, so when we get to that fire, we can go to the schedule and you can go.
Bill, could I, could I add?
Sure.
The retirement is paid after every pay period.
Okay, so it's linear.
T C D R S drafts, drafts the money for that pay period on payday.
But on the, on the fire, it's paid, we get invoiced by the town.
I, I got off on, I got hit on my chart here. So it, so it's, it's done linear. It's a linear expense.
Yes.
And Jennifer just made a point on, if you have a question on the fire retirement, that goes to the town.
That, don't, don't, don't.
I'm talking about mud.
Yeah.
I tried to move from computer to paper here and so my computer was ahead.
Okay, continuing on the general fund, the water distribution, we went through, we're on the wa- wastewater side. Anybody have any questions on that?
Are you on page three, Kevin?
I'm still on page two.
Well, the wastewater goes over to three, yeah. The water distribution goes from two to three.
I'm, I'm still on page two.
Yeah, yeah.
Kevin, Kevin, are you still on general fund expenses?
Yes, we're on page two. What account number, Bill, so?
Uh, let's do a big one. Let's do general or maintenance and repairs.
What's the count?
Fifty-five zero eight zero. Fifty-five, zero, eight, zero. It's third up from the bottom.
Got it.
Um, I show, we, we had an amended budget in ninety-nine, five. We have a proposed of one hundred thousand. But year to date with, uh, three months remaining is sixty thousand, nine oh seven. Says additional infrastructure maintenance.
Si- it's sixty-seven, nine oh seven, right now?
Sixty-seven, nine oh seven, yeah.
As of, that's as of June thirtieth.
Yeah, and, yeah, June. So you've got July, August, and September left of this fiscal year.
And in the, in the water business, July, August, and September is where you're gonna have more maintenance than any other. Starting yesterday, we had our first big main break. So that's where you're gonna start seeing lots of expenditure, expenditures.
And so my point is, once again, this is something that is not in, unlike the prior case, this is something that's not linear. In its expense.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And it goes with, same with the revenues for that?
Yeah.
You get a lot more water revenue in the hotter months. Okay. Next.
Yeah, usually by this time of year, I get, I always get nervous because we're only about forty-nine to fifty percent of revenues. But we only have three months left and I have to, every year, go back and pull what we did those last three months and insert it and go, okay, whoo, we're, we're gonna get there, but.
I've got the same question on the last item on that page, vehicle maintenance. Uh, previous budget was, original budget was eight thousand, uh, proposed is eight thousand. But once again, we've only spent thirty-five hundred dollars. To me, that looks like that's over budgeted.
Can you mention the, uh, account number so people can?
Okay, uh, fifty-five, zero, nine, zero, one thirty-five, fifty-five, zero, nine, zero.
And Kevin, I could follow it cuz you said the last item on the page.
Well, I'm on another page, but, okay.
Um.
And the, and the only thing I can say about that is, I mean, we were, we do have some newer vehicles now and I've got a proposed newer vehicle in here. So, I mean, it just kinda depends on how the vehicles are, you know, keeping up.
Yeah, well, the, the rea- once again, the reason this wound up highlighted is I went back to the prior year and looked at the expenses and it was, I mean, there's some of these that I've highlighted. I'm trying to work so I can change back, so I can bring that page up. I mean, some of them, they're like down in the sixty percent range, sixty. I mean, there's, there's a few there I found are clear down to thirty-seven percent, only used of budget. And so in my mind, we're over budgeting there and.
And again, there's things that are paid upfront or at the end of the year. Another example is dues and memberships. It's budget five hundred and there's eleven dollars spent. Correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I think prior work on that probably would be four hundred would be the, if I done, from a prior budget looked at, I think four hundred would probably be the accurate number there if it's the one that I'm thinking about. But, uh, didn't, I didn't go chase that one.
Bill, part of the problem for the vehicle maintenance is even if they do the standard vehicle maintenance, one big repair, Carl had one this year, it'll wipe out that whole line item. All you need is one major repair. And we have had it, for example, in wastewater, if you look at Carl's line when we change pages and you look at the vehicle maintenance down there, you'll see the very high maintenance. It didn't go over budget, but it's close to topping out to the top of the budget.
Well, I mean, and I understand that, I understand that theory, but that's one of the reasons I have reserves.
So you wanna increase reserves for, I mean, from what I understood, Terry saying, you look at back at historic, uh, information. Then you get with the department head and say, okay, what do we have coming up? You know, tires on a vehicle or, you know, some major repair on a backhoe, you know, for line replacements and that goes in here. Now, I'm not gonna sit here and say, they're gonna spend exactly five hu- or whatever you said, and I'm looking at dues. They're gonna spend exactly five hundred dollars to do that. And they only spend eleven. Well, they might have been busy and I'm looking at the dues and memberships as an example, but they might have been busy and not had time to go to a certain, you know, place or they felt that that dues. Well, then the next year would show up, we only spent eleven and roll into that three-year average and question the department head, why'd you budget five hundred dollars last year and you only used eleven? Because it's all over the place on anybody's budget. You can go to ours or the towns or another town and look and say, they, they budgeted this and didn't use it.
And I, I wanna say there's some things that kinda fold together here that, and this is just as kinda off topic, but something for you to think about as you move forward. In the TCEQ's, um, financial guidance, they, um, indicate that you can grant the authority of a staff member to, to exceed budget line items by ten percent, but you have to do that through resolution. So the board could, uh, the way our policy is, is the general manager can approve expenditures up to the budgeted amount. That's it. And then anything over budget has to go to the board. So if you have a vehicle breakdown and it's four thousand dollars and you don't have it, then the vehicle just stays stopped till you have a board meeting. But you could look at doing a, a policy that allows some, uh, you know, over ten percent over the budget line item and that, that's just kind of a side note. But on this item, what I heard Mike say is, I have some newer vehicles. So Mike, I guess the question is, do you think you could live with a reduced amount of vehicle maintenance? We know that by the end of this year, you're gonna spend at least half of that, four thousand. So what, what do you think you could live with?
I, I would say this, I mean, we have an eight million dollar budget. Personally, I, I got a meeting at one o'clock. I, I don't wanna sit here and have forty-five minute conversation over whether Mike is gonna spend four thousand or five thousand on vehicle maintenance. If Mike was that good at rec- uh, reading the future, I want him to buy lottery tickets for me. I, I don't see a whole lot of value in doing this.
And the only thing about that vehicle maintenance too, I'm also contributing half of the maintenance for the back truck.
Okay.
Because we use that to dig up our water.
Amen, Greg Wilson.
Okay, so move, moving on. Uh, Bill, do you have anything else?
Certainly not.
No? Yes?
No.
Oh, okay. Kinda chucked me there. Okay, uh, we're on the wastewater portion of it now.
You need to call the page number.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I apologize. I, I think the agreement was that when the fire chief, uh, when the, uh, fire department came to.
Yeah, I agree, but I just wanna pay, finish this, uh.
Water, yeah.
Oh, finish water, okay.
Okay, so we're on the, uh, water, that's done, right? No more questions on that?
What page are you talking about?
Page three.
Three?
Page three, the top half of page three.
Yeah, I think we just finished water, didn't we?
Yeah. Okay, so let's.
Why have we not paid the, um, TCEQ permit fees for the PID? What?
It's the last line item on the TCEQ.
The last item, one thirty-five, six oh, one, three, five. I think we have paid it. I think that maybe y'all put it in the wrong line or something. Because we pay it in January every year, so I know we've paid it. So y'all look at that one, okay?
Okay, so we're, just to, for the record, we're done water and we're gonna stop at the wastewater, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, which is on page three, about ten or twelve lines up. Everybody agree?
Yep.
Right, Bill? Jim, you following us?
Yes.
Kevin, one thing, one thing that would help me tremendously is, on the system I've got, I can't see page numbers. So if you would just mention the, the top account, I assume you're on one thirty-five, fifty-five, one oh five?
Well.
Meeting, setting the equipment.
We stopped in, at the end of where it says, uh, general fund, water and distribution. And the first account number in wastewater is, uh, one three five, five zero 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 five dash O two O. O two O is where we're gonna pick up.
All right, thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna go to the fire, uh, section. Since Chief Arada was nice to come in.
One twenty-two accounts.
Yes.
It's on page seven.
Page seven, thank you. Now, is that seat getting a little hot there, Chief? Okay, we'll start with the fire. Did you have something on the retirement on that bill or?
No, I had the same, it's the same, uh, highlighted retirement issue, but it's obviously, it's gonna be, it's linear. And it looks like it doesn't match, but.
The retirement portion of it?
I think they've been sure of fire chief that they haven't been paying retirement on. And so that's gonna, for, you know, that, and I think that, weren't there two new firefighters hired this year? So when you're budgeting at the beginning of the fiscal year, you're looking at a full staff and then things change through the year. So I think it will come under budget this year on the retirement specifically in the fire department. Because, um, as the, the interim fire chief is, is not, he doesn't get retirement, he's a contract personnel.
Yeah, I, it was, I just found that the number being down like that was interesting because it was ninety-seven percent in twenty fifteen.
The town had a rate increase that you may have not noticed on page twenty-seven. Uh, their rate, their TMRS rate was twelve point seven five, October through December. And then January through September, their rate went to thirteen point two six.
But I, I think the major overage that you're seeing is because of this, um, not paying retirement for some vacant positions this year.
Did that answer your question to your satisfaction, Bill? Okay, uh, moving on in the fire, I had a question, question on, uh, software support. And if, you know, if you wanna go, it, like, we spent forty-one, seventy-three and then we have eighty-two, uh, O six proposed. And I see the chart on, uh, page twenty-nine, I think it is. It's the information technology. Do you know anything about that, Chief?
On page twenty-nine?
It's on thirty.
It's on thirty, okay. Yeah, the chart carries over thirty, so. It's hardware, uh, printers, copiers, is that correct, Terry?
Yes, well, it's only seven hundred and fifty for the hardware that was repair and maintenance, but it's at eight thousand, two thousand and six for software and support for fire.
Yeah, um, I think what we've done here is look to increase one license for firehouse software. So, uh, right now, we're operating with two. And if one person's on it, nobody else can use that one.
So one for each shift?
One, not one for each shift, but, but for a captain, a chief, and then one for one of the firemen fighters. So if they're sitting in the room operating it, all three could be on firehouse at the same time. So if you have the chief reviewing it, the captain entering data and the firemen doing their other stuff, all three could be on at once instead of having a bump one off to do something.
Okay, I, I mean, you may or may not know, when we had those three fires or two, had large house fires, there's an issue on communication on, uh, between, uh, different departments. Is, is that being resolved? Is that?
Absolutely. Um, it's, it's not our issue, it's more the other departments going digital. Since we did, we went, uh, Denton County went digital several weeks prior to that event.
Right.
Um, the other, Keller and the other counties, South Lake are actually behind us by a couple of months. And so we're slowly, they're slowly coming online to the digital network. Um, and we're coordinating with all those agencies to get their access codes and everything and it's being done through the county.
Is Westlake in that same boat?
Westlake's on Keller's system with South Lake, so it's, it's, it's Keller which does those two and then, um, Flower Mount's on their own system.
So once you fix Keller, you solve?
We don't, they, they do it themselves.
But I mean, once they resolve their issue then, that resolves it for all those.
Once they flip the switch, we're, we're all on the same radio systems. And Donnie's doing a great job of making sure that we're even programming our radios better to have quicker access to those channels and mutual aid channels and stuff, so.
Okay, uh, next question, and you may or may not know this, on the medical. I understood that the town is getting away from the TML, uh, medical and going to Blue Cross Blue Shield, is that?
Correct. Yep, they're, they're having training next week.
Okay, are those numbers in here? Have we been told from the town, given a, an, a number?
These were the numbers that the town gave me, um, when I requested it from the chief. And I believe that was the end of June, the beginning of July, so I don't know which numbers are in here.
It most probably would have included that because they had no intention of staying with TML, so they would, they were negotiating with this company the whole time. So these, I would pretty much guarantee that the numbers you have are what they're preparing for next year.
Do you mind just making a note to double check that number?
I will get with, uh, Stephen on Monday.
Also, I, I heard that there's some talk about replacing the chief vehicle.
Mm-mm, I'm sorry. We're not replacing the chief's vehicle, we're enhancing the fleet. So it'll be a new add-on, uh, to that, to the vehicle fleet. The current vehicle used by the chief will become a, a general purpose vehicle used by the firefighters themselves to run to the store or, or go to a call or even the volunteers. We're gonna increase the use of the volunteers and they will be using that vehicle to go out and assist either the red hats or, um, if additional volunteers come in during a fire and the other group has already taken the pickup truck with the trailer, they can either run back and forth with ice and other equipment. So it's gonna become a general purpose, uh, vehicle for the fire department.
They're gonna park it next to that dummy police vehicle?
No, not this, this, this won't actually be used. So, but that's what the, the town is, is covering that one.
Okay, you have, so it's basically a new, it's a new vehicle from what I hear.
It's an enhancement to the fleet, yes, sir.
And it, it'll be the chief's vehicle, but the one he's using now will drop down.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Uh, the chief was breaking up a little bit. Did I understand him to say they're not, they are not talking about replacing the, uh, the fire chief's vehicle but adding another vehicle? Did I understand that correctly?
Well, the new, the one they will add will be the chief's vehicle. The chief's existing vehicle will be dropped down to be like a, a multi-purpose vehicle.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Okay, have we been advised by the town of that replacement? Is that? Is that in his budget? Okay, well.
We, Chief Laskin and I did not ask the mud to participate in that.
And the cost of that new vehicle is how much and where is it in the budget?
They, they didn't ask us to participate in that cost.
Okay.
So, so is it gonna be an EMS vehicle and not a fire services vehicle?
It's gonna be a multi.
It's gonna be a town vehicle.
It's gonna be a town vehicle.
Yeah.
They're paying for it.
Okay, good deal. It makes no sense.
If you would like me to.
Split funding on a vehicle, you got no way to do insurance.
We, we had a.
The total cost is thirty-three thousand, fully equipped, ready to go.
Right.
Is what the total cost is.
So the town is gonna pay for that, from what you understand?
We asked for that in the, in the town's budget, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a, a question along that same line of the same email that, that he's discussing. And that is, this year, the town did it a little different when they gave us the cost for COLA pay and merit for the firefighters. They just rolled it all into the base, which is fine, but the, the stipend, that was not included in that?
Um, if I recall correctly, I think the town has done away with stipend. I'll have to check on that, but I think they've rolled it into, um, merit pay.
Okay.
So.
Hey, Jim, can you mute your line?
Well, no, I, I turned it back on cuz I wanna ask a question.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I, one thing I don't understand is, i- if the town is paying for this, why is Mayor Pro Tim Greg Lamont sending an email to all of us asking if we're gonna participate for fifty percent of that vehicle? I don't understand that email.
I, I don't know either, but I, I'm just going on what the chief said and so, I'm not gonna, I'm not, yeah.
I'm with Greg. I mean, we're, chief's here telling us what the town's gonna absorb it, so we don't need to ask any more questions.
Yeah, I mean, if the town, the town has it.
Okay, just, I just didn't understand that email.
Okay, can you mute, please? Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the chief, they, they gave us a fire budget and we're gonna look at the budget that they provided.
Yeah, Councilman Lamont did ask during the, the town's, uh, workshop if you were participating and Chief Laskin and I advised him that it was in the town's budget to replace the vehicle. Because as far as we understand, the chief's current vehicle is paid for by the town. They bought the town, those cars are owned, the only, I don't think there's much sharing except for the pickup truck.
We actually paid half of that vehicle, I believe, is that correct?
Yeah, the town, the town records show that you only pay, the town has only paid for half of the pickup truck. And has purchased the ambulances.
You're talking about the expedition, correct?
Expedition is paid for a hundred percent by the town.
Okay, I thought we paid half of it, I remember paying half, uh.
Yeah, so that's why, that's why we kept it, that's why we kept it at a hundred percent on the town side.
Okay, and we just gotta go, what you said, as far as Jennifer said, we used to get a breakdown so we could see. And you said you thought they got rid of the stipend. Is it possible that you could go back and get Jennifer?
Absolutely.
The breakout that she needs? Thank you very much. Okay, uh, anything else for the chief?
On page eight.
Okay. Page eight, Jim.
Kevin, I just wanna, I just wanna come back one more time. There's no cost in our budget for this vehicle because the town is gonna fund it a hundred percent.
That's a hundred percent correct.
As it stands right now, they haven't approved their budget, but as it stands right now, we've requested a hundred percent in the town's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, pay, we're on page eight, Jim.
Line item, uh, one twenty-two, sixty-five, zero, zero. Line item one twenty-two sixty-five zero zero five, fuel and lube. In twenty fifteen, that number was adopted, the budget was ten-four, amended to eight point eight. Total for the year was five point five, only spent sixty-three percent. So my question is, why is it where it's at now?
Which is the twenty-one thousand eleven.
Twenty-one thousand eleven. We've only, in six months.
Thirty-two seventy-two.
Yeah, in nine months, we've spent three thousand two hundred and seventy-two dollars. So, help.
Yes, Chief, let me help you with that one because that was something I had discussed extensively with Chief Lasky. On the last page of your paper packet, page thirty-two, there is a detailed listing of the fuel, anticipated fuel and lube. And originally, the fire engine, the ladder truck, and the brush truck were not budgeted separately with the appropriate costs for their individual maintenance and lube, especially the new ladder truck. That's five thousand dollars by itself. And that had not been budgeted in that appropriate manner. And so Chief Lasky wanted to make sure this year that it was budgeted so that in the new year, he will be able to provide the appropriate maintenance, especially on the new fire truck.
There really wasn't much PM done on the vehicles, and he's trying to get that in a, on a routine schedule to make sure that it's done going forward.
So we're saying that the maintenance, are we saying the maintenance with those prior year costs was not being done?
No, when they transitioned to buy in the new truck, it was, it was assumed that it was under a hundred percent warranty, and so some items were left out for this year's budget. So there's a gap between the old ladder truck and the new ladder truck. So money, the funding wasn't appropriately put there. So we've, basically what Chief Lasky and I have done with the staff's help is to right-size the fire department's budget.
Okay.
And so you'll see, there are other changes in here where you see dramatic increases and new line items added to right-size in this budget. And I can explain that in more detail a little bit.
I think one of the questions was asked, just to get clarification. So are we saying that the maintenance was done, but it just wasn't necessarily reflected in one of the charts? Or are we saying that because it wasn't budgeted, it never got done?
Yeah, the new truck didn't need that much service this year, but next year, it's going, it falls off of any type of maintenance program, and it, I mean, warranty program, it goes into a full on ours. Now, you'll see, there's another line item for the repair of the current, the engine that we have, and it required a lot of maintenance this year. So you'll see that one is actually over budget. And it's still, it's still down, it went down yesterday hard, out of service, so.
Which one, the pumper?
Yes.
Okay, and that was the one that had the tires in there too, wasn't it?
It had pumps replaced, it had tires done, it had steering issues, I mean, it's, it was a heavy maintenance year for that vehicle.
It's, okay.
Which we didn't account for.
Okay, had not planned for, I mean, when, when something goes down, it's not a planned, I mean.
No, we should have catastrophic, and what we've done in this year's budget is add, add events and added a catastrophic event funding. We're not sure what that could be, but we have funding set in here for this budget in case something bad happens. A transmission goes out, an axle goes out, or a major pump goes out. But it's just something that has to sit there just in case.
It's a reserve.
Absolutely, yeah.
And if you don't spin it.
Yeah.
It's there next year.
Exactly, it rolls, so.
Okay.
Kevin, I'm sorry, I could be on the wrong page. I thought Bill said we're on page six zero zero three five, which starts postage, is that right or wrong?
Oh, he said the count number.
Yes, you're.
Fire, page eight.
Yes, that's the correct page.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Kevin, I can't do pages, you got to tell me, what's the, what's the subject item of the top item on the page? I can find it.
You have it correctly, you have it correctly, it is postage.
Fuel and lube, six five zero zero five.
The top item is postage.
You're on fuel and lube?
Yes.
Yeah.
The top item is postage.
It is postage, that's correct.
Okay, you're on fuel and lube.
Correct.
All right, thank you, I'm with you now.
Okay.
Okay, on the maintenance, it looks like a new item, twelve thousand, is that correct?
Yes, for property maintenance, basically, we call it a firehouse, but as administrator, we have to look at it in several different ways. It's a, it's a massive drive-through facility, it's a small little hotel with a full-service kitchen and a conference center with office space. Okay, if you look at it that way, you understand that we may need to maintain a building in several different fashions, right? Because we have a kitchen facility, bedrooms, offices, and a conference area, which includes bathrooms and everything else. And we had no way to fund any of those repairs over the last years because it was not budgeted for. So what we're attempting to do here, because we've done all this maintenance this year, we're trying to set a baseline to be prepared to continue that maintenance for out years. And that's where we started, we've talked to other facilities similar to ours and gotten input, and we believe between ten and ten thousand, ten and twelve thousand dollars is a good baseline for annual maintenance on a building of this size with these types of functions. And that's the philosophy we took on looking at this number, and this is how we ended up with it.
I thought in the past, and I may be wrong, that they put everything under like maintenance and repairs for the building or?
Well, we didn't do much.
That's budgeted for, and this is same, it's five five zero eight zero. And what's annual extractions or?
That's a, that's the typo, it's actually tooling for the, for the engine, replacing tools and equipment.
Okay, so shouldn't that be under vehicle maintenance stuff?
No, it, well, it's, it's equipment that goes on the vehicle.
Okay, so it's.
It's replacing of tools.
Okay.
Extrusion stuff.
So that twelve thousand would include things like the roof leaking?
Painting the building, replacing a washing machine, or repairing some toilets, or buying new mattresses, you know, things like that, tables break.
Right.
It's just routine daily maintenance.
Yes, I'm highly in favor of that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, and for the sake of putting it out there, I did discuss with you and Chief Lasky about the mowing, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And that is not something you all wanted to include in the budget?
No, the town has agreed to mow that at no cost to us, so we're going to continue to accept that charity.
Okay, and it, generator maintenance and repairs is a new line item too, correct?
That's not new, no, sir.
What, what number are you at?
Well, you had no.
I think what we've done is separate that out. Get some help here.
Because no.
I'm sorry, it used to be, we had some generator maintenance back on our fuel and lube, and this year, we've pulled it out. There just seemed to be a little confusion, so we wanted to add some clarity. So we created a separate line item so that we can clearly see what is maintenance for the generators.
So it's a new line item, but the expense was rolled into something else.
Which, which line item is that?
It's on five five zero eight five.
Is that a different page?
Page seven.
It's on page seven.
Oh, it's back one.
Oh, sorry about that. I'm looking at a spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Okay, on, on the maintenance issue, we talked, you were here a couple of months ago, and if there's a ceiling or pipe, a plumbing fixture leaking, do they document that in a form and follow through? Are they using an email to go through, or is there a process?
Well, yes, there's a process in place, Captain Sykes is the building supervisor, and he has forms, records, everything on the building now. And he'll be keeping track of all that stuff and is responsible for maintaining the records.
Okay, so there's a documented trail somewhere that you can go back at the end of the year and go, this is how much maintenance we had, and these things were all resolved, and any warranties tied to those maintenance issues?
Absolutely, and that's why we've asked that this separate line be kept so we can keep the funding clean as possible.
Good, appreciate that. Volunteer program.
What's your line item?
It's, sorry about that, six zero one two five.
I've shown advertising.
Oh, yeah, oh, it's advertising, it's volunteer program advertising.
Yeah, advertise, yeah. So where, where are we at on that? Is five hundred dollars?
Yeah, basically, we're utilizing the TCEVA more so than ever. We have our own volunteer firemen, but we're also utilizing the volunteer corps that we currently have. So we don't need to go out and, and do as much as, is that because they're here, they're already here? And we're just, they're already, they're already going to start contributing, we've already reached out to them, they're going to come in and start helping at reception duties, answering the phone. So in terms of advertising and volunteering for more, they already do that for us.
Okay, are you talking about the firefighter full-time volunteers or volunteers that come in to do admin?
No.
Like the citizen.
Chief Lasky has his own ideas on how to recruit volunteers, so he doesn't need necessarily want to advertise outside of the small little groups that we use.
Yeah.
The firefighting programs that are out there. But with the three that we have, and we're talking not part-timers, but the volunteers, he's going to maintain that as a small group, three to six people as a volunteer corps, is what we're looking at. So, and he's already worked with the three we have, and we may pick up one or two more. But I don't think he wants to go above six.
Okay, so five hundred is a good number.
Absolutely.
Okay, just want to make sure.
And on it, I have a question, so on the six nine one nine five Gatsby thirty-four reserve for replacement, so we're doing another eighty-one thousand four hundred and twenty dollars for another one-tenth of a fire truck for twenty seventeen, correct?
Okay.
Okay, but there's nothing else in that Gatsby thirty-four account besides that one fire truck?
This is the Gatsby fire.
Okay.
And with the purchases for the maintenance that the board already approved, that's the one that's going to have a balance of three thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so this will be added to that three thousand dollars.
So I just wanted to make sure that, I mean, the note talks about one-tenth of a new fire engine, one-tenth cost of a new fire engine. I wanted to make sure that that reserve number that we're working with there is more than just for that fire engine.
No, right now, the board had said to put away one-tenth for a fire engine.
And so that's all that's in there.
That's all that was anticipated to be going in there.
There will be three thousand left after the expenditures this year, so at the end of next fiscal year, there would be roughly eighty-four thousand is all in there.
Okay, so we're doing nothing to, with this action here, we're doing nothing to replace the reserves that we expended in this, in this last budget?
That's correct.
Well, they put aside, they have twelve thousand dollars for fire station.
Maintenance, yeah.
For maintenance, but, and that's the maintain, but if we're talking about replacing, or, well, if we're talking about replacing any other fire station equipment outside of that twelve thousand dollars, unless I'm missing something, I don't think there's any other reserve funds for anything else other than the fire truck.
And we're not paying ourselves back for taking from the fund.
That's my, that's my point, because, I mean, I think we've, we get into your gear in here, talking about you're purchasing new gear. But not only should we be purchasing new gear, we should be doing a set aside for future funding of replacement of that gear.
Well, in, in our budget, it's already planned for.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we've already forecasted, if you're talking about the bunker gear.
Yes.
We, our plan in our budget does include a replacement plan for the bunker gear. So it wouldn't need to come out of here because it's, it's a multi-year, long-term plan.
Yes.
It's already in a separate line item.
Okay, but, okay, and so it's, I mean, that replacement is in those costs, but what I need to do is I need to be able to look in future years and say, see, that was set aside here, that's a replacement value. It's, in my mind, it's a reserve, it's a designated reserve, it's designated for that purpose. And so when I look at budgeting, I don't come back and say, well, you didn't spend it, so I'm going to cut it.
Right.
That's, that's my, that's my point in that discussion.
Isn't the whole budget as a whole a reserve, though? You're putting money out here, like you're saying uniforms, and it's twenty-eight thousand in this year's budget. Well, that's a reserve kind of saying you have twenty-eight thousand to work with by the uniform.
No, there's difference. In, in Chief Lasky's mind, in my mind, when we built our budget, we built the budget going out years. So you don't see our out-year forecast here, but our out-year forecast include six sets of replacement for bunker gear each year to keep our bunker gear under a ten-year mark and build our supplies for our three reserves and our six part-timers. So we're always, so our out-year forecast in our budgets, you see that, but you don't see them here on the chief.
And that's, that's the part of the picture I was looking for.
Right, and I agree, I think in, it should be discussed by the board that we may want to bump this number up higher to backfill, if we have the funding, to try to repay ourselves for the money we just used, because the truck is not going to last another ten years since we're starting over. I mean, it's already eight years old, right?
Well, it, I mean, you can look at it two ways, you can say, okay, now do it eighty-something, eighty-four times two, or eighty-one, four twenty times two. Or at the end of, when you do need the truck, you just have to finance more, you won't have as much of reserve.
Right.
What, what's the anticipated life on the truck, and you said it's already eight years old?
I believe it is.
And what's the anticipated, is it ten years?
We could most probably get twenty out of that thing, I mean, Chief Lasky, I think is thinking sixteen, I mean.
And, and we know the cost would be about eight hundred thousand as a replacement cost. I mean, granted, based on, we'll get Mike since he's real good at estimating. But no, but we think it's about eight, nine hundred thousand dollars to replace it.
I would say that's a fair, it's between six and eight, depending on what model you get. I'd say that's a fair number.
I, I think what we have to do, counted to Bill's, sorry to speak for you, Bill, but we can't use that fire engine reserve to be a reserve for other stuff. We can't keep dipping into that, so if we have other things we need to do, we need to create another reserve to cover that and not dip into the fire engine reserve because we're going to run into an issue.
What we've done with, with direction from Jennifer and the directors, we've created a real budget. We've, we've right-sized the budget with forecasts, with planning, and so we won't have this problem in the future. We have a maintenance budget now, we have, we have replacement plans for our SCBA's, we have, the bunker gear is fully established for out years. So as long as we work within our forecasted budgets for the next several years, we won't have these big issues that popped up this year, so.
But my point is, if we're setting aside funds as a replacement, in my mind, a replacement account is a designated reserve. And so it should be tagged as a designated, should be a line item as a designated reserve.
And you should talk about, you know, when do you start reserving for the new ladder truck that you're going to buy in twenty years?
Well, exactly, I mean, it's with purchase. I mean, the time to start that type of program is the day you purchase it, you're making payments on the new truck, and you're also funding a designated reserve for its replacement.
Okay.
After we figure out how much we spent.
Anything else on that, on the fire?
Yes, I've got a question.
Okay.
Seven lines of capital outlays, sixteen thousand eight thirty-six for two fire thermal image devices. I thought we had one and we're going to buy one more, why are we getting two new ones?
Yes, sir, what, what we did was, we replaced one that failed. We have a new one on the truck, and these are going to be two additional ones. These are not, you just need, this is not just something you just need one of. I mean, if we, if we ever.
My question is, you need two additional ones?
Yes, sir, that would be nice.
I think he's talking about a primary and a spare on each vehicle.
Each truck.
On each truck, so if you go out to a fire and your primary one fell again, now you have a secondary one.
Yeah, or if you send in a second team at a different location, you got one guy in the front, one team in the back, they both have a thermal. Or, I mean, we hope to never be in the situation like we were in a couple of weeks ago, but if you're split up and you have teams over here and teams over here, and you have multiple crews, and your teams are going in the front and the back at the same time, you, you have the ability to give them this asset.
Each team?
Each team.
Okay, yeah, I've got it, I understand, it makes sense to have one on each truck, got it.
Oh, it'll be ultimately, just, it'll be two on each truck, Jim, not one, but two.
No, no, I mean a primary to backup, I got it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir.
And once again, reserves for it to replace it.
These will go on a replacement plan.
Excellent, thank you.
Just like our radios and everything else.
Excellent.
Okay, anything else on fire? On the air packs, there's no number on there, is there, or maybe?
Eleven thousand fifty.
Yeah, yep, these are to replace some of the air mat, the face masks with voice activated devices. They have amplifiers that go on the face mask so that it's easier to talk on our radios, and that's what this is. What we've done in the past, I guess, is piecemealed the back, the SCBA's, instead of buying full kits, we've either bought the harnesses, the air bottles, all separately, and now we're just catching up to replace the mask with voice amplifiers. What we'll do in the future for our replacement plan is we will buy full kits. So instead of piecemealing it, we'll buy a full SCBA pack, it's the harness, the tank, and the face shield, face mask with a voice amplifier. So, instead of piecemealing it, we'll buy a full SCBA pack. It's the, the harness, the, the tank, and the face shield, uh, face mask with a, a voice amplified amplifier. Will be kits, we'll buy them in kits as replacement, and that's what we'll plan for in the future, so.
Okay.
Okay, that's, uh, fire. Any, any other questions on fire?
Will the face mask with the voice amp make him sound like Darth Vader?
A little bit.
I am your father.
If you catch it at the right time when they breathe in, because it's positive pressure, yes.
Okay, anything else?
Nope.
Do we need chief here anymore, or are we done?
Nope.
I think we're done.
Cool. Well, thank you, directors, thank you for your time, and, uh, if there's anything else you need, and I'll get you back these answers.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thanks a lot, chief.
Thank you.
Remember, the town kept you here four hours. I think we did you in thirty minutes, so remind them that at the next meeting.
We're gonna remind you all that you let him go in thirty minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Back to the general fund.
To wastewater.
The wastewater part. We're on page, uh,
Three.
I don't know where you are, Jim, because you're looking at a PDF, I believe, right? Jim Thomas?
Actually, his PDF are the same pages. I don't know.
Yeah, the pages are the same.
Jim Thomas, you, you with us?
Yes, yes, I'm scanning up to get it.
Okay. Wastewater, page three.
Towards the bottom.
One three five five zero 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 two zero is the department. Okay, um, wait till Greg. Do you have questions on this, Bill?
Not on that page.
On page three, so.
Well, we'll have to wait for Greg to get back.
Yeah, we can go back if you don't see anything highlighted on there, so. Um, Jim Hayes, you okay?
Yes.
Okay, so we're moving to page four.
And Kevin, what, what's the title of the first item on page four?
Preamp physicals testings.
Okay.
Pre-employment preamp, uh, I saw you laughing at me. Bill, you have anything on this page?
Oh, sure. Uh, one that I found, this is, and this drives Greg crazy, so we'll do it while he's not here, uniforms. I find that, uh, uniform costs are, we're chasing hundreds of dollars. I don't know if I'm a thousand dollars here yet.
What account number?
Uh, sixty-five zero one zero, one thirty-five, sixty-five zero one zero, way down there.
Okay, and if, so if you look over at scheduled GFF, we can go through what's-
Yeah, I understand that.
Placed on there. GFF. So, for, uh, wastewater, you can see what, uh, Carl has budgeted for each of his staff.
Page twenty-one is GFF.
I, I understand that, but my point, my point is, my point is, prior year's experience is that the funds are not being used. We're budgeting for it, but we're not, we're not picking it up.
We hadn't bought any coats yet for all my guys.
Okay.
It's been hot enough, we hadn't had to get coats.
Okay, no, but I, when I say prior year, I went back the twenty fif- the twenty fifteen budget, and that, and that worked that percentage and looked at it and said what was going on there, and so I understand what you're saying about coats now. I under- I understand that perspective. So, what I was kinda looking at, actually looking at the entire GFF page while we're there, uh, water, uh, water gets, uh, ten uniform shirts, and wastewater only gets six. It's like, uh, why do we have difference, just nothing else, but why difference in amounts?
Uh, the difference in amounts there is like when we do a lot of main breaks and everything like that.
Okay.
A lot of the mud and everything to get on their shirts when they wash them, a lot of that stuff doesn't come out, and it just has to be replaced.
So, basically, what we're saying, it's more of a replacement than a wear, a standard wear-out issue?
Yes.
Okay.
Carl's guys don't do as much work, so they don't have to-
Do, 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 do.
Carl needs to start pushing his guys in there.
He's just more neat.
Jennifer, you can't say that on tape.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I have been to the wastewater treatment plant. I, I understand.
You're absolutely right. I just like to give him a hard time, that's all.
And they're all outside, so, anyway. Okay, thanks.
Anything else on wastewater? Jim?
Yeah.
Thomas, you got something?
Well, no, I, I, I'm still trying to find where you are. I see wastewater now, so I finally caught up with you.
Can you mute, please?
Okay, I see. It's been good talking to you. Can you mute? But, uh, I'm down at the, on, uh, on that, we're on, uh, yeah, I'm gonna go all the way to the bottom, uh, right above subtotal wastewater there. Uh, sixty-nine one nine five, Gatsby, replacement, uh, reserve for replacement, new account planned for replacement of wastewater collection-
Lines.
Lines, okay. Um, I do have a question on that. Uh, this replacement of H, of, of new wastewater collection lines, uh, one of the things that I had talked briefly or an email with the general manager about was H-two-S detection and mitigation program, uh, because of the hydrogen sulfide chewing up the concrete as well as everything else that it comes in contact with. Do we have some way of monitoring that to keep track of problem areas or anything like that?
We actually do have a meter that actually opening up the manholes, and we actually test with the HT, H-two, the HT.
H-two-S, that one?
We test that, just to make sure it's okay, because we normally have to climb in there and actually clean it up and whatnot with that, so we do test it. But most of our stuff is PVC.
Okay, so we don't, we don't have, but it's the concrete, what I'm looking at, uh, replacement of the collection lines that, uh, and, and the only reason I bring this up is I got an education when I was down at the AWBD new member workshop training. Fellow I sat with for lunch was an operator, wastewater plant operator, who had retired and got plod back into the seat. But he said that the problem that they were having was in their wastewater lines, that the H-two-S had attacked them, and the top of the lines had eroded away and become brittle, and they started having cave-ins on their water li- or on their sewer lines, and so that was a problem. He said, we would dig down to a line. He said, I could actually dig down to a line, use a shovel, open it up very carefully, and tap on it, and it would cave in. They had gotten so brittle. I don't know the age of his lines, but the question is, is, is that something that we should be monitoring? Because we could have issues out here that are just waiting to happen.
We're also, uh, videoing everything also. That way, we actually, uh, see where the problems are to get our budget worked that way and repairing them that way.
Okay, because I see, I see this as an issue coming downstream at us.
Yeah, and Bill, and as we kinda discussed, and up here in item, um, the engineering line, fifty-five oh oh five, I've, um, added some money in there for a sewer system study because it was, um, took longer than we had hoped, I guess, over time, but my goal when I came here was to start the, at that time, the immediate, of course, issue that the board had was with the wastewater plant, so we spent a lot of time getting that into a good place. We've now finished the water system study, so we kinda know of, it's created a five-year plan, it's created a, a future plan for that. The last piece is the sewer system, and I think, I agree with you, I think that's something we could get the engineers to look at and see if they think that's some kind of an issue that we should put into a PM of, you know, what type of testing you would do, but all of that, um, I'm, you know, I won't be here, so when you're writing the scope for this study, that would be what I would suggest is that you ask them to look at not only what lines they think are, are, you know, need to be replaced first over time, but also what do we need to do to extend the life of those lines, and have that put into a study like we did on the water side, and I, I think that this is the opportunity to get that done.
You, you referenced the, you're talking about the new director meeting.
Yes.
Who, who put that on, AWBD, and then who was the instructor?
Uh, I'd have to pull that packet out. We had several, we had ser- we had multiple instructors over the days.
Yeah, I was just, you mentioned like the thirty PSI or last meeting, and I was just wondering where that came from, but, okay.
I, I have a quick question. Uh, I noticed on the six nine one nine five, which is the last line above, uh, subtotal wastewater, that also has Gatsby thirty-four, and Gatsby thirty-four, that's also the account that's the reserve for the fire engine. So, are these funds being commingled, or under, under Gatsby one, uh, thirty-four, I'm assuming there's a number of sub-accounts under that
Yes.
Main account?
Yes.
It's actually, it's actually Gatsby, it's a fund, one thirty-seven, and within that fund, these, uh, amounts are segregated by the different line items, like water's one, technology was one, and this would be a new account, a new Gatsby.
For sewer.
For sewer.
We, there's not been a Gatsby sewer account before.
Okay, and I, I just wanted to make sure of that, so that on the Gatsby thirty-four, then we would see a fire and then a wastewater?
Yes, just like she showed in the presentation, they're all designated to what group they go to.
Hey, still on sixty-nine one ninety-five, Carl, uh, it's, the note out to the right-hand side of that says new account for planned replacement of wastewater collection lines. Are we talking internally within the plant or externally on sewer lines, outside the plant?
That's, uh, outside the wastewater plant.
Really, it could be either. I mean, whatever it would be needed for sometime.
Outside sewer lines as well as those within the plant.
Okay.
But the ones inside the plant should be very new very soon, so it shouldn't be needed for those sooner than later.
And the outside ones, we usually do on capital improvement projects when they replace roads, is that correct? Okay.
No, we don't.
We don't replace that, we don't.
That's the water lines that we've always done with the roads.
I thought we did on one with the drains. Okay, moving on.
All right, I, before you move on, I do have another question now about that. We talked about increasing the reserves in wastewater by two hundred thousand dollars, setting that in there?
That's, yeah, that's up in-
In a transfer out of bank reserve, six zero three three four, isn't it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes, do you see it?
Yeah, I see it, but doesn't, doesn't that go into a reserve account?
Yes.
It's a transfer out, okay.
It's a transfer for the reserve.
So, basically, what, what we wind up with is, if you, this, we have this reserve right now that's called wastewater collection lines. We could designate just that. My question is, is do we do just that one, and then we have a general one for sewer, which is the two hundred thousand, or do we have a total of two thirty?
No, the, the Gatsby is for planned infrastructure replacement. That is where the thirty thousand will go. The two hundred thousand is for the cash reserve account, which is commingled altogether, and it's for unanticipated emergencies.
And the part tied to wastewater is two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Uh, that, oh, that's the wastewater contribution.
Okay. I may still be struggling with that.
When we start talking about replacing roads.
Yeah.
Jennifer?
I'm sorry.
Uh.
Pay attention.
I'm sorry.
When, uh, we, seems like every year we get surprised when the town decides to replace certain roads, and we pretty, feel pretty obligated going there and replacing the piping. Is there money in this budget for that, for twenty seventeen?
No, we, we weren't told of any road repairs this year, so we don't have anything planned for that this year.
Did we ask?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay, again, anything else on wastewater?
Hate surprises.
Anyone? I hear none, so we're moving on.
Well, one thing I do wanna say on that is, I've always been an advocate that it is important to replace those concrete lines, but you also have to, just for the sake of that they're replacing a street, if there's other things that need to be done more, you really need to prioritize that way. You can't just look at it because they're replacing a street, but I guess that's a matter of opinion.
But Mike, they told you they weren't gonna do any roads that's coming here?
I have not heard that they're doing any road replacements this year.
But you asked.
Yes.
Right, it's important, the important part is not whether they told you, but it's whether you ask.
Okay, moving on, we're on board of directors section. It's on page four. First item is salary and wages of that. Do we have anything, any questions on that section?
I would, uh, salary, salary and wages.
I'm sorry, I, I wasn't paying attention.
Is that, is salary, salary and wages, is that different than the meetings? Salary and wages is what, is our fees at the meeting?
It's all director fees.
That's your- They're-
Okay.
They, it's just because it's paid through payroll, and that's the account salaries and wages, but it's really not considered a salary or a wage. It's considered a fee of office.
Okay, fees.
Yes.
Does, do those fees also incur social security, Medicare, and all that stuff? Unemployment taxes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but not unemployment, okay.
Used to.
I would like to zero out that line item.
Zero out salary and wages?
Salary, wages, social security, and Medicare taxes. I'd like to zero those out, as well as the unemployment tax, as it's not required.
And why is that? You don't think we should get wa- director fees?
You're right, I don't, that's the way I feel. I don't, I don't think we, I don't think that we need to be compensated.
Okay, so do we do a consensus vote on that, or do we vote on that?
You can't vote on director fees at this, at a budget workshop. You can choose to not budget anything, and then, as you amend, you'll need to amend the ethics policy, which you're gonna work on anyway, and, um, you, I would just strongly suggest you do this before October first, because then if you don't get it done, you won't have anything budgeted.
Let me get to consensus, and I can do that, correct?
No. No. Um, you can-
Okay, I'll just, I'll just mention I disagree, and that's it.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Just for what it's worth, uh, at the last AWB conference, uh, as we moved around tables, I asked about forty-five, I'm guessing now, about forty-five different mud districts, what they have in the way of director fees. Now, granted, most of these were in the Houston area. Every single one of them established a hundred and fifty dollars versus our hundred dollars. Every single one.
Okay, well, the way I look at it is, if someone doesn't wanna accept the fee, they don't have to accept the fee, and it'll just bring that number down.
And we've had directors in the past that have donated their fees to charity or other things. That's an individual decision.
Yeah, I mean, Greg mentioned to give it to cable. What he does, if he accepts a fee, is none of my business. If he doesn't accept the fee, that's his option. Okay, so Bill mentioned to zero it out, duly noted. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I wouldn't have a issue with zeroing it out either.
Okay. Any other line items to discuss?
Well, I guess on that one, are you, what are you directing us to do on that?
Well, that's why I said, if you wanna hear comments from each one, but I can't take a vote to tell you yes or no.
You can, you can decide if you want to zero that out. Well, I'm saying you can't decide if you want to accept or not accept fees of office.
No, no, it, it, yeah, and I think the question he's asking is, if you have a disagreement among a number, how do you resolve that disagreement?
No, you can vote on the number in the budget, so I, I misunderstood. I thought he was asking me, can you vote on whether you're gonna take fees of office?
Okay, Jim, what's your take?
Well, I do not think it should be taken off.
You what?
So, he's voting with you?
Okay, Jim Hayes, you're-
I do not think it should be taken off.
It stays in there. Next. Anybody else have anything on board of directors?
Stand by.
I see that y'all have only spent two twenty of your miscellaneous expenses this year. Can we cut that?
What, what is the miscellaneous expenses?
I'm just kidding you.
What is it, though?
Can you show me each receipt for the two twenty?
I think it's things, um, maybe copies or something. If you're at a conference, there's been things like that.
How about an AWA M-one manual?
You could order that if the board agreed to it, certainly.
We got eighteen hundred dollars, as long as you don't exceed it.
How about, how, how about if-
A, a board set, if that's what you would like.
Does, does anyone have any problem with taking that down to a thousand dollars?
What, which sub-account are you talking?
I was really just kidding.
Six zero two four five. I mean, realistically, it's two grand.
Yeah.
I'd say, let's close it and move on.
Yeah.
Okay.
But it was, um, on page five.
Yeah.
So, it was, uh, oh, it was here, the miscellaneous expenses.
Okay.
Up from subtotal. Okay, anything else on director section? Okay, I seen it, Bill, you still looking, okay. Okay, we're gonna go on to the admin.
Wait, can we skip back over to fire because, uh, Chief Arada came back?
I was sitting there wondering, it's like, what is he talking about?
He likes it here?
I got your answers for you on the, um, the insurance, the TML, it's not.
Just a second, just a second, Jim, we're going back to fire now, okay, Chief Arada came back.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, directors, um, I did receive, uh, answers on your two questions. The insurance is the current Blue Cross Blue Shield numbers, which are actually lower than the TML numbers.
Okay.
And the stipend is in the town's budget only, it's a twelve thousand dollar number. So if you wanted to share that with the town, it'd be an additional six thousand dollars to our budget. But the town did not pass that cost on to the mud.
Okay.
They're holding it in the budget as a twelve thousand and it's a merit system, so it's not a guaranteed number.
Okay, so it's what we had as merit in the past year, is that right, Jennifer?
No, he's saying there's, the, the merit is in here, right, the two percent merits for.
It wasn't passed on to the mud, the, the salary and wage number.
But the stipend was different.
Well, they call, they call it a stipend, but the way it's, the way it's, the employees evaluated to receive that is by merit. So they, their annual evaluations are done, if they meet certain criteria through their evaluations, that equals, uh, they, it's a number rating system. And if they fall within a certain number, they get a percentage of, uh, an allowable amount of stipend, of merit.
But, but apparently the town has decided to fund it themselves, so I don't think it's relevant to us.
Okay.
Well, no, I, I mean, what they said, Terry.
Was it was included in the budget.
There's a merit up to two percent that can be provided on October the first. And then another two percent that can be provided up to, on April first in seventeen. That amount is included in the base that they gave us, but the stipend, and, and we're probably, I'm thinking the, I hate to call it old days. Because it was just this fiscal year, but, but they used to do us, uh, an amount, like a one-time amount.
Right.
And that, it sounds like went away.
It's a twelve thousand dollar number that the town has in their budget, but was not passed on.
Okay, so that, so the, the numbers that are here are all we need.
Yeah.
We're good.
Perfect.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, chief.
Any other questions before I go?
Can you go get me a hamburger or something?
Sorry.
Okay, thanks again, chief. Okay, we're back to, we finished the board of directors and we're on the admin, it's page five. The first account is salary and wages and it's department zero three zero, okay, Jim Thomas?
I'm with you.
Okay. Okay, in that admin side, since we know what the town is doing for their employees and we have people that overlap, are we? Are we doing the same, or we, I know we had a merit system last year, correct?
Yes, our merit system is a once-per-year merit. And, um, it's given, the evaluations, all employee evaluations are done in March each year. And then it makes it effective the first pay period of April. And then also we included a COLA, a cost of living adjustment, which would be effective October first. Or the, you know, first pay period after October first.
And the breakout is on scheduled GF-eight on page twenty-three.
Yes. The merit is not a percentage, it's a, it's a dollar amount of a maximum amount that each employee could get.
Based on performance or it's a merit?
Yes.
I have a question on the COLA amount. How was the?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Bill, on which, on which line item?
Oh, it's a, it's general, it's gonna be a general question, but it's on admin and I'm on page twenty-three, uh.
Yeah, I'm on admin, I just.
GF-H?
It's in the scheduled GF.
It's in the schedule on the, uh, GF-h on the.
Oh, oh, okay, got it, got it, got it, thank you.
And, and basically, it's, it's COLA and it's gonna apply, uh, throughout all the, uh, all the pay scales. With the exception of fire. I was wondering how the two percent was derived.
Terry?
I'm having a blank moment, I apologize, my mind just went boof. Um, last year, I believe it was two point five percent and this year, I'm sorry, I just, my mind just went blank on the bill.
The reason I ask is because I went out to CPI, urban Dallas, and it's one percent.
Yes, but the fire department, when we looked at the comparison between the fire and the mud, they were doing a two and two. And when we looked to be comparable between the two with our two percent merit and our dollars, our dollars would equal their up to two on their half.
But I'm not talking about fire, I'm talking about everybody except fire.
Well, but it's comparable to between the two systems. It's usually been comparable in prior years.
Well, I can't argue with the town on their two percent or whatever they put in there, but I can question ours.
That's, that's your right.
And I, and I just went out and looked and didn't find a basis for two percent. My experience has been, you get two percent over, I mean, you get the percentage, whatever the cost of living is, I mean, that's the purpose of a COLA. It's, and it's retroactive, it's a retro thing, it's not a forward, forward-looking feature.
Well, you, isn't, didn't Terry do the same thing, like the town is doing this, as you said, you went out to where, CPI or something?
Yeah, CPI.
Yeah, so you're comparing CPI to us, but Terry's doing us to the town, what's the difference? I'm lost there.
The difference is the source of the data. I mean, this, if you, if you do the two percent, it's, the CPI is one percent, I mean, that's easily documented. If you do the two percent, it's a, it's a, it's a one percent CPI and a one percent raise.
I think the answer to that is the cost of living in our case should be defined as cost of living and effort to, uh, not screw our employees as compared to fire.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna ask, does anyone have any problem, two percent? And we'll just.
I guess the one question I have is why does the communications specialist, specialist and administrative assistant not get the COLA?
They're both new positions and their policy says that you don't get a COLA unless you've been here six months. And they will not have been here six months. The admin assistant is a new position and then the communication specialist is, she's just new.
Okay, okay, I didn't realize the administrative assistant was a new position.
Yes.
Okay, any other, okay, just real quick, Jim Thomas, two percent, you're okay with that?
Well, you know, I think, I think Bill's making some good points, Kevin, but, but I would rather have, uh, a few extra dollars there in case we decide to move in that route. Than to come up in the position of, we have to move in that route and don't have the funds and then, then we have to take it out of reserve. So, yeah, I'm, I'm basically okay with having it there.
What are you talking?
When you get a chance, I do have a question or something else.
Jim, we're talking about COLAs, uh, you know, admin salary, employees' COLAs.
Yeah, what, what, what he's saying is that the town is doing two percent effectively, we've said we're gonna match their two percent. Bill has brought up, if you look at, uh, the Dallas area, the cost of living, it's only actually, CPI is actually one percent. So we're doing a COLA twice what the, the cost of living number is for the Dallas metro area. And he wants to know, are you comfortable with just matching what the town of Trophy Club is doing or considering doing a different amount?
I guess my question would be, why is the town doing twice?
We can't answer that, I can't, we don't, we don't know.
Why CPI doing one? The, the question again is, are you comfortable with two percent or do you want to look at that?
I do want to say something and, especially on the, the part of the, our water and wastewater operators. If you go look at any, um, if you go look at, uh, Texas Rural Water Association, TML, any, there is the, a huge shortage of operators. And our operators are, I'm not gonna say they're underpaid, but they're, they're barely there. And so if, if you look at that, you know, make sure you're looking at what are our salaries look like for operators in this area? Because I can tell you that right now, I can count at least eight positions that are within, you know, hands' reach out for our operators in this area. So I think it's important that we make sure that we keep these operators here, because we've had an open operator position for, I think, since I came to work here. And, and can't get it filled, we cannot find an operator.
But to accept your point, the point in that case is that the salary is incorrect, that they're being paid. Your point, I, I can accept your point, do a study, say, this is what the salary scale is in the area, we're here, we need to move those salaries to that point. But the way to do that is to acknowledge that fact and move those salaries and not say, well, I'm gonna give you another one percent. I'm gonna double what the COLA is and, and pat you on the head and say, I think that's great, that's not great. I mean, it's a COLA, give you, you get the COLA, but if the salary's wrong, we need to change the salary.
I, I.
Kevin, Kevin, question for you.
Go ahead.
If we, if we have the COLA amount at, at two percent, that does not mean we have to allocate two percent, does it, it's just a budgeted amount?
No, it's done.
No, you allocate it.
You give it to them.
Yeah, the town does it twice a year, from what I understand. But again, we're not gonna argue or debate what the town or why they did it or whatever, the question goes.
That's not my question, if you put two percent in your budget, does that require you to award two percent or is it just at this time a budgeted item?
I, I, I think the answer is, there's not an obligation to do it, but that's the intention to do it. If we didn't intend to give it to them, we wouldn't put it in the budget. So the amount that you see is the amount that these employees will receive.
Correct.
Yeah, that's, I'm, absolutely.
So the question again, are you for the two percent as it's in the budget now, or do you want to omit it, increase it, decrease it? I'm just trying to get a feel so we can move on to the next items.
I'll, I'll say it this way, I am nervous about putting an amount that's different from the town based upon something that happened a couple of years ago.
It, it's the same amount as the town.
Yeah.
Well, you're saying, but changing.
Basically, you go to one percent, it's not the same.
Okay, so you're.
Well, so then you're for the two percent.
Yes.
I'm trying to explain, I'm nervous about not doing what the town does simply because of the politics in this community and something that happened a couple of years ago. When we didn't do the same amount that the town did.
So I take, I take that as you're for two percent.
Where's, where's that?
We want to match the town at two percent, you're for doing that, correct?
At this moment in time, I'm for doing that.
Okay, Jim Hayes?
Yeah, that's fine.
But I do.
Greg?
I, I'm fine with the two percent.
I'm fine, Bill?
Uh, now I've got, now I've got a question because we're comparing with what the town did, right? And the town has a merit up to two percent and then up to two percent in the amount included in the base. Do we know what they did for cost of living? It just says it's included in the base.
They don't have, this year, they, from what I understood, they're not calling it a cost of living, it's being called a merit. So they're having a merit October one and a merit in April.
So they're not doing cost of living?
They're not calling it a cost of living.
Okay, so if they're not, so, so Mike, so then the question becomes, ah, we're using different systems. We're using, we're, we're using, uh, cost of living and a merit. They're combining them, coming up with a percentage.
But they're not combining them, they're doing one in October and one in April, but they are doing it based on a merit type system, yes, that is what I was told.
So, so they're doing merit, they're calling it a combination. And their total is two percent and up to two percent on two different pages, so they're talking about a total of four percent, is that right?
Probably a little more than four percent because you, two percent, plus the cumulative two percent on top.
It's really about four point, whatever.
Yeah, so, so my point is, is if you're doing that, well, my point is twofold, one, if, if the cost of living is really one percent. And you want to increase the salaries one percent, increase the salaries one percent and call your COLA what it is. Now, the merit, I understand, if awarded, becomes part of the base pay for the employee and then that continues on.
One of the reasons, one of the reasons we're different is because we were never, the, the district has never given the stipend that the town has given in past years to their employees, the district doesn't do that. And the district in the past has, has authorized a cost of living October one and then a merit, a dollar amount, not a percentage for in April. And then the general manager awards the specific dollars that they feel is appropriate on April. So you're entirely correct when you say it's not apples to apples, it's not an equivalent system, but sometimes you do the best you can. And the district has never received a stipend, so when you're looking at the total compensation between the two units, maybe in your opinion, you think we shouldn't be at this point. But in the past, we have, so that's all I can say is that in the past, that has been looked at.
Yeah, like, well, kind of have to stand, you know, separate agency kind of have to stand on her own. But the, you mentioned merits, we have a list of merit pay? Are, are we saying that if they meet the standard, that the amount of merit pay listed here may not be the amount of merit pay that's granted?
It, yes, it depends on the, um, you know, how they rank as far as their eval, their valuation goes. If they're mediocre, they may not get the maximum amount that's included there.
Okay.
If they do an excellent job over the, you know, in their evaluation, then they may get the total amount. But that's the maximum anybody's gonna get, is what's listed there for that person.
Okay.
Or position, I should say, not person.
Okay, so what I heard is the consensus, everyone agrees to keep the two percent in the COLA, correct? Anything else, by anyone on the admin?
I, the one thing I would say is if we.
Yeah, Kevin, I have a question. On the software and support line out of fifty-five oh three zero, it, it drops from eighty-one thousand to sixty-seven thousand, what is causing the drop?
What was the one three five, what?
Uh, one, it's about, about the middle of the page, it's one thirty-five, software and support. One thirty-five fifty-five oh three zero.
Oh, three zero, okay.
Jim, you have to look at the backup in the budgets, what's on scheduled GFL. But we look at this individually each year, I talk to M-three and see what they think we need, um, for our software. And so there may have been software last year that we were anticipating replacing or buying additional licenses for. This is what is being anticipated for this year.
Okay, no, then I, I just wanted to make sure, it's, it's a pretty big drop year to year on year. And the, uh, I just want to make sure we weren't dropping it too far.
The, the last thing I would say on, on the administrative piece is if we recognize that the employees are underpaid and we have a position that we haven't filled in four years. I would say we need to do a salary survey, because the last thing we can afford to do is lose a bunch of employees because we're underpaying them. So I would like to, if we don't have it in the budget, let's get some in the budget to look at salaries and what's the right salary for people. And come up with a plan and get them there.
No, we probably should do one across the board anyway.
I would agree.
Yeah.
So just as a note to the, uh, staff, if we could, looking at that.
Do we need to, is there any type of funding we should look at, at that, you know, if we put it in the budget?
In a future meeting, why don't we just bring it as a September, I guess.
Yeah, I think, um, I think you should wait till you have a new manager.
Well, it's, you aren't gonna, you aren't gonna put it on this meeting, so if we have a future meeting after the next meeting, we can make sure it's on the agenda.
But what I was looking for is if, if we're going to do that, we need to budget it.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think, um, actually, I think there is money in here for independent labor that that could cover it.
Okay.
Um.
I, I would add.
I wanted to, I'm, sorry, go ahead, Jim.
I'll just add that I don't think salary survey, our staff is pretty overloaded as it is, we shouldn't ask them to be doing salary surveys. We should hire somebody to do that.
Yeah, normally it's an outside service to do it.
Yeah, I agree.
Be like Congress.
Kind of jumping back to the, the software and support issue, I want to point out that, um, in the past, we have shared in a software with the town. Connect CTY, is that the one that does the callouts? That has, that has expired and they went their own way and the district needs to be looking at getting a new emergency callout software. I've been, um, in contact with three or four different companies and it looks like. and it looks like we could get one for about six thousand dollars a year, um, for, for basically unlimited callouts. And, um, so I wanted to, I just wanted to kind of bring that to everyone's attention, that that doesn't exist anymore.
We don't have CTY capability?
No, we don't have that anymore.
That's expensive.
So, Jennifer, the sixty-seven seven ninety-one does not include that amount?
I don't, no, I don't think so.
Okay, were we budgeted for-
That's the point I was making. I just saw this big drop in software support. I wanted to make sure we weren't overlooking something just like this.
We have budgeted in the software number, six thousand dollars for a replacement-
For a replacement for Connect CTY.
For Connect CTY. It is budgeted in here, Jim.
Yes.
But this, the CTY, from what I understand, CTY was actually more expensive than what we're going to, is that correct?
Yeah, and well, it was about, um-
Was it nine or something?
I, I don't remember, honestly.
Yeah, but it was more expensive.
But you can find one, um, that does more, a better system and some of them, and I will make sure that I get with, you know, Mike and Carl and kind of go over what I've looked at on that. But there are systems like Code Red, different ones that you can go online and you circle this street and it'll only do a callout to that street. And it, it's, it's a much better, and for, for us especially because if you have a water line break, you don't want to call everybody on the east side of town when it's only affecting Oakmont Street.
It's a capability that's critical to our, well, I won't say critical, but it's important to our operation because if we have a water line break, we need to be able to contact people.
Yes, and so, so I'm just wanted to make sure that I did kind of bring that up to y'all so that it doesn't get lost or, or dropped, that that doesn't exist now.
Well, Jennifer, is Terry saying a minute ago that it is covered in a budget item on the schedule?
Yes, it is. There is a, a, a six thousand dollars for a replacement. And the, the companies that I've talked to, the, I know one of them, I don't remember, the other, actually, one of them had, never has sent me a quote, but the most expensive one was about six thousand dollars. So, that's what I told her to include in the budget, but I think you might be able to get that trimmed down quite a bit.
Okay, but what you were generally doing was explaining that within the sixty-seven seven nineties one is in fact this expense.
Yes.
All right, I got it there. Thank you.
I, I have two items.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, six-zero-zero-three-five postage?
Yes.
Uh, right now, with three months late remaining, we're ten thousand dollars under. Do we need all that postage?
When we do mailings, we use a significant amount of postage.
Oh, I know it's costly, costly, yes, but-
Yes, so if you don't budget for it, then you can't spend it. So, there had planned to be some consumer education programs in this new fiscal year. If you'll look under, uh, that public, public education budget, you can see we've increased that line item significantly because there had been a plan to do, uh, some extensive customer education. So, that's why the postage needed to stay where it was.
Okay.
Um, I think we talked about in, um, increasing mailouts regarding water conservation. Also, we, if we do a bond election in November, you'll want to do some sort of mailouts to, you know, let customers know about hearings, that sort of thing. And so, that was the reason that I asked her to bump that up a little bit.
And then the other one, well, actually, advertising down there, seventy-five thousand dollars. We've spent sixty-two dollars so far.
But we will have to do significant advertising for the bond elections and- the wastewater.
We do the, we have not, we, by now, we would have already advertised our wastewater permit renewal. That's going to be probably about five thousand dollars itself for that advertising, but-
Because it's a straight carry through from last year.
Right, it just, um, you know, it depends on the number of projects that we do and the cost to advertise it in the newspaper. Um, we're going to have to re-advertise for the, the restroom renovation, so, um, for this year. So, you will see that bump up, that sixty-two dollars.
So, advertising for a construction is something, for a construction project is something that goes underneath there. Okay, the next one is, uh, right below that, miscellaneous expenses and DM discretionary. I'll bet that's GM discretionary.
Yeah, it used to be district manager and so it needs to be changed to general manager.
Once again, we're at seventeen-five, a straight carry through from previous years and this year, we spent fifty-two hundred, call it fifty-three hundred dollars.
Um, I have just, um, I hold on to that close to my heart in case something happens and we need it. For the I-beam project, that was the first question, do I have enough in my discretionary to do that? And I did not, but, um, there's a, two new printers that need to be purchased that I've authorized them to buy out of that.
Okay.
It, it's just kind of, I, I don't spend it unless it absolutely has to be spent.
Petty cash or not petty cash.
It's really, you know, I mean, it's, it's, they, sometimes they beg for things and we need to get them, so. One thing I would like to get before the end of the fiscal year is a binding machine. We don't have a binding machine for like these books that you have here and we do lots of bound reports and things for TCQ, so. But I'm, again, holding on to that money in case some other tragedy occurs that, before the end of the fiscal year.
Oh, I, I see one more I'd like to touch bases on too. And this is going to be a general one. Six-zero-zero-two-zero, electricity. I was wondering what the inflation factor was on that, uh, because I did some research and had a number in mind. To find the note will be a challenge.
Now, while they're looking to answer your question, I've got one that kind of dovetails with you along those lines and that is, how often do we review, uh, electricity, electric providers? And then what length of contracts do we sign?
We just reviewed it, I think it's been a year ago and signed up and I think it's a two-year rate. We reviewed, we, uh, got a electric, uh, company insurance, electric broker, I guess they call him, where he can get quotes from the different pieces and, and help us figure out what would be the best for our situation. And we utilized the gentleman and we did look at several options and we, uh, went with the cheapest, one of the cheapest ones. And so, we've got that rate for another, I believe it's a year.
Uh, thanks, Terry. What generated that question is my wife Irma does an exhaustive review almost every year on this and, uh, we always wind up getting our, you know, outstanding, probably the best rate available.
Uh, Bill, you want-
Should be interested in volunteering at the mud for a week or two?
Listen, if you let Irma come in and do this for you, you'll get a good rate.
Bill, you were asking about the, the, uh, increase, projected increase, it's five percent.
I, I see that. I was trying to, okay, Eric found it. U.S. Energy Information Association expects the annual average U.S. residential, residential electric price to fall by, I got to get this note up, to fall by point-three-six percent in sixteen and, uh, point-three percent in sixteen and then rise by three percent in twenty-seventeen. So, it's, I look at that as being just the five percent being a little bit fat, but, uh-
What was it for commercial?
Unfortunately, I don't have a commercial number. Yeah, that's, that's where the rub's at. Uh, the other thing I had, and you, you discussed, um, that we are working with someone, a provider, uh, so anyway, I met a person at the A W B D, A W B D conference in Fort Worth. Actually, more than one that was selling their product, uh, might want to look at because he seemed to indicate that his costs were less than some of the other, uh, operators. But I have a question on the cost per kilowatt hour. When I go down that list, on the cost per kilowatt hour, I see a range from point-zero-seven to point-two-one. How is it that our cost per kilowatt hour varies based on where it's at?
Because you're paying for the pass-through costs. The electric companies pass through their generation costs and those costs change. You may have a specific amount you're contracted for per kilowatt cent, but whatever those pass-through costs are, those electric generation costs, you don't get a choice on those.
Well, I understand that, but that, wouldn't those apply to all, to all of our uses? Wouldn't that be a common, I mean, it's like you go to, you go buy gasoline and you pay road taxes and your gasoline cost and it doesn't make any difference whether it come up in a Chevy or a Ford, you're going to pay those. I just find it interesting that we have a different cost per kilowatt hour. I would have thought that they would have all been the same.
What, what is the charge, Mike called, or Carl? Oh, I can't, I don't know why I'm drawing a blank.
It's like a surge. It's a, it's a load, there's a load charge.
Demand.
A demand charge? Do, do we get demand charges on these individually?
We do. I know I, me and Renee spoke about this earlier this year because at the water plant and everything in the summer times, when we're pumping a lot of water, I'll get a high demand cost.
Right, and it's the, it's the fixed pumps that cost more than the variable. That's, um, like at the, at the, you know, stadiums, the reason they have those lights that come slowly on is to avoid that. Well, that's the, one of the reasons that in the end, variable pumps are cheaper because they ramp up and it's not that surge like you have. So, it, and the wells are different, but the, each one of those has a different charge and then, as she said, the pass-through charges. So, we get the same kilowatt per hour for all of them that were on the same company, but that's always going to be a different amount in the end.
But the, but it's basically because they're all on different meters.
Yes.
Yes.
Then we can get the demand charge and that's what drives the difference in the price.
Yeah, with that, at the water plant, I have two different power sources, so I get two different demand costs there. One of them's small, one of them's quite large. Anything else, Bill?
Bill, can I just say one thing for you? The way that the spreadsheet is set up, this is just the bill, total dollars with the total kilowatts divided. That's how we came up with the cost per kilowatt. So, what you're seeing here, it doesn't show the actual kilowatt cent we're paying versus the pass-through cost. It's just all in there together and then the total dollar amount we paid is divided by the kilowatts to get the cost per kilowatt. So, that's why you're going to see those numbers all over the place because you're not looking at just the kilowatt cost. You're looking at fuel generation pass-through cost included in there.
Yeah, but those, but, but here again, that should be a standard percentage. Now, the demand costs, if we're picking up demand costs, I can see where those would be different.
I used to work for an electric company. They're not standard.
Okay.
You, you look at those bills, the numbers, it, it, you would, they're not standard. I mean, when we look, when we pulled our bills and looked at them, we'll be happy to show them to you and you can see what you think for yourself, but they're not, they're not. I know how you're thinking about it because that's the way I would think about it, but when you look at the bills, you can't pull that same thought.
Okay.
I guess the only question I would have is, we're at twelve and we, so far, we spent five. For me personally, I don't care how they bill. I mean, as long as we're not generating our own bills, uh, we don't have any control of that. Uh, the only question I guess I would have would be, we're at twelve, we've spent five. We're anticipating seven thousand dollars.
July, August and September, once again.
Where it's going to kick in.
You're going to, I don't, have the pumps stopped since July first? I don't think they have, so you're going to-
No, then, 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 I personally, from my standpoint, as long as you have a bill come from an electric company and you're pretty sure they're not cheating or fudging it, I don't, I don't, I don't know how much traction we gain in your debating direction.
Yeah, I just, I just thought it was interesting.
Okay, let's move on.
I, I do want to ask one more question, I'm sorry, but because this just came up. Renee and Carl, did you cover the cost of that new power that the contractor we've been working on for weeks getting it put in there? That's included in here. Okay, I just want to make sure.
Okay, that was the admin.
Yeah, what page are we on now?
Karen, I've, I've got something else I'd like to ask.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, it's not on the budget and, and I'm wondering if it should be. Uh, and it has to do with, with fatal things, water conservation. But the, it, when, when the, when the family went to sleep at night, I was climbing through other municipalities, uh, systems. Basically, I was looking for sewer step rates, could not find a single one. Uh, all, all other municipalities that I've researched have, you know, have the same rate, you know, for sewer throughout for both residential as well as commercial, unless commercial has a different strength. But what, what I was looking, what I stumbled on is what I wanted to bring up, is, uh, Westlake, excuse me, not Westlake, uh, Grapevine and to some degree, Southlake have really, really extensive water conservation programs. If y'all, it, you know, Bill and Greg, y'all were, were not here, but, but about three years ago, I, I brought a, a firm up called Wise Guys. They go by a different name now out of the Houston area. But they offer a program to municipalities at a fixed amount where the municipality pays for free analysis of customers' sprinkler systems. And these guys really go out and do a first-class job. And then there's, there's all kinds of, of rewards in this. My, my point is this, is I, I would be more than happy to go do the research on it and bring it back as fast as possible, but would it make sense budgetary-wise to start thinking in terms of some program of this nature that might assist with water conservation? And by the way, I do want to compliment Director Roast because I think the stuff that Bill puts out on, uh, on The Voice having to do with water conservation is very good. The, the only problem is it only reaches X number of people, but I do believe that is very good stuff. I, I'd just like to ask because there's a money associated with doing something like this. We haven't talked about it before. I think maybe now would be a good time for us to talk about it.
I, I have a question. Do you have an, I actually think that's a very good idea because I think one of the things we find, well, I, I haven't experienced those, but I've heard anecdotally, one of the things that we found with issues when people have problems with their bill has been because of their sprinkler system, either the programming being off or something along those lines. Do you recall approximately how much that was to have them go out and do that service?
No, what it is, what it is, Greg, is, and, and I don't recall the exact amount. It is a contract you signed with them for a fixed amount and they, they calculate it based on the number of residents in your community, based on the, their, their track record of what percent of communities will normally, you know, come forward. Because not everybody's going to do it, even though it's free. Not everybody's going to do it. And so, they have a, a fixed amount. We can certainly get that amount. Uh, and then, uh, but what caught my attention is Grapevine on their website just advertises the stew out of this thing and it's, I mean, boy, if you just read it, it sounds like they're having a tremendous success with it. And I thought it was something we ought to at least look into. Although I have to tell you, I only hit it, you know, like night before last and again last night. So, I don't have a cost yet, but we can certainly get it pretty fast.
Okay, I mean, what we could do, I mean, if you bring something together, we could put it in the future agenda to discuss and see if we want to use a portion of the reserves or something to do that service.
And, and there is ten thousand budgeted in here for public education that, that's usually more towards our, um, Water Fest. But, I mean, I, I don't know if you're talking five thousand or a hundred thousand, but that's a little bit that could go towards that and as Kevin said, it could be, um, pull it from reserves as well.
Yeah, and what triggered me was this issue of postage and communications. That's what, uh, what triggered it.
So, if you put that-
Look, we can't take any action today, obviously, nor can we, it's not budgeted for Tuesday night, but for a, just FYI sake.
Yeah, future meeting.
I'll cut, I'll contact these guys and send out to everybody whatever I find. Well, I'll send it to Jennifer so she can send it out to everybody, whatever I find.
Okay, thank you very much.
That'd be great.
Okay, are we done admin?
Uh, capital outlays.
Excuse me?
Capital outlays, sixty-nine zero zero five, back on GFA.
Okay, it's on page six?
I'm going to, you wind up on page fifteen.
Fifteen, okay.
Bill, I'm, I'm sorry, I can't flip back and forth from the GSA, but which particular line item is this associated with?
Uh, it's going to be associated with line item six-nine-zero-zero-five.
Two up from the sub-
Six-nine-zero-zero-five, thank you.
Two up from the subtotal.
Capital outlays?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, I'm with you.
And then go to schedule on page fifteen.
GFA.
G F dash A.
Yeah, Kevin, if I, if I try to do that, I, it's, it's just-
Okay, that's fine.
Hard to get back to where I am, so I'll just try to pay attention.
Okay, we have three items there. Document management system, which we've previously talked about at a prior meeting. Parking bollards and security system.
Okay, the, um, the document management system, as you said, that's to, to take the place of the winocular for our electronic storage, document storage and we're in the process of working on the contract. Pam has that to review it. The parking bollards and the security system. Parking bollards are something- the security system. Parking bollards are something that we felt we need out along this fence out here. Um, on more than one occasion, we've had people go through the fence. And so we, we wanna put up the, those concrete bollards to keep anyone from going through there into a tank.
Tank's next.
Yes. Um, and we, we do have a quote for that, a, a budgetary quote of what it would cost. The other thing, the security system, this is something that, that Jim brought from, uh, we had a, um, several of the directors met a company at, at AWBD conference and we had them come out and do a review of the whole building and the, the other sites, the, the water and the wastewater sites. And it would be to put in a new security system as far as the badges and, um, because the system that we have is the, is the town system. The, they, so we asked them to look at retrofitting when they move away, that we don't have any software to run the doors and things. So that they'll retrofit, uh, but with a newer software, because the, the software that the town has is, they find it very difficult to manage. And so it would be to put all of that in as well as camera, a camera system.
And Jennifer, when I checked with Mike Pastor in this process, the software that the town's got is, uh, is absolute minimal at best. And, uh, and we felt, I felt that this gentleman who specializes in doing this, uh, if we're gonna install something, we need to do it right.
Okay.
Yeah. I, I only, I have one question. The riding lawnmower on the wastewater, um...
Where was that at?
It's, I'm sorry, it's also on page 15, to the left.
Yeah.
Under capital outlays.
Okay. And another...
Is that a, is that a, yeah.
We already did that, okay. But I'll let you go.
It's not my fault you got on the wrong page. No. So I'm assuming, are we gonna do, is this to replace like the, uh, one of our cutting services or?
No, actually, we have one now, but we've had it for quite a while. And it's actually, we've been repairing it a lot now. But it's actually getting of the time where we can get another one.
Yeah.
The contractor...
Specifically for the wastewater treatment plant grabs.
The, the contract that we have, the wastewater plant was not included in the contract.
Okay.
And the, the original reason was because it's so under construction, you couldn't get out, you wouldn't want anybody out there. But once it's completed, there's very minimal that has to be cut, you know, other than that one big area. So the, they just, the guys felt like they could do it themselves. So...
Okay. Is that the last?
I think Bill had something.
I, I realize that we agreed the beginning that we were gonna do each one of these items, uh, as we went through it. But I'd really like to go through GF page by itself.
Okay, we, we can go there. And when we get to that page, is that okay?
Oh, okay, I...
Unless you wanna do it next, after we finish this, uh...
Okay. Well, you know, however, yeah.
I, I think Jim has something.
Yeah, Kevin, just one, one comment about one of the things that Jennifer mentioned. Uh, Bill, you and Greg may not know this, but, uh, not too long ago at one of our major elections, might've been a year ago or two years ago, we had an older couple, an older individual try to pull into our parking lot and they thought they were gonna hit the brakes and their foot slipped off the brake, hit the gas pedal, and they actually drove through that wooden wall that's only about five feet from our water tanks. Thank goodness the car didn't hit the tank itself. But, uh, this is what generated the, the, the request I had that we put up, you know, barriers. Uh, because one of the things that we, we could be really, really subject to, if someone wanted to do material damage to us, one of the ways you could really get us is plow something through that fence, destroy, you know, destroy one of those tanks. And we're at 3 million gallons of water until that thing can be replaced.
And I, I don't think anyone had any problem with that.
I think we were all good with that.
Yeah.
I just wanted to give that explanation. Y'all don't work here when I ask for it.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate that clarification.
On this, on this capital outlay, what I was trying to get at is, when we went through the water and wastewater, that, those line items were in there, but obviously everyone didn't catch. So if we're done, the admin and the non-departmental, and we're done this general fund, we can go to the capital outlay and go back to the...
Let me, let me do non-departmental.
Okay.
Uh, legal.
Which, which one are we on?
We're on page six, uh, 55, 135 55045. Top of page Jim is, uh, Hardware 65055.
Thanks, Bill.
Proposed is 150,000. Uh, my question is, funding for the rate appeal that continues into next year, and also legal expenses for the, uh, aerial sewer line break, uh, discussion going forward. Is that 150 adequate or is that light?
The, okay, the 150, that includes the, uh, PUC funds, is that correct? Or no?
The, well, we had budgeted the, you know, most, the bulk of it this year.
Yeah, because that, after October, it's pretty much in their hands. Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
Based on the schedule that was out?
All the filings and things should be done.
Okay. And then the other one, what did you mention?
You've, you've, you've got three or four days in session with the judge in January, end of January and February, plus backward and forth. So I, I'm just looking, I mean, if you think 150,000 is adequate, then that's, I mean, as far as rate appeal, if, I mean, if you think that's fine, uh, I don't, I don't know about where we're at on the sewer line break and legal costs that we've got coming down on that one. Uh, so I just, I just wonder if that's...
I can't find his, uh, 55055.
55045.
It's in non-departmental, department code 039. Okay.
135 55045.
And I'm gonna, I'm, I'm sorry, guys, I'm on a different page. My, uh, I'm still under the...
Page six, page six.
Look for department code 039. The last, uh...
It's, it's on the same page as Star with, uh, Hardware IT.
Okay. Uh, my feeling on that, Bill, is if the staff thinks this is a good number, we go with it. If we exceed that number, then we have to blame the staff for not budgeting it.
We'll blame Jennifer since she'll be gone.
Yeah. We can call her up. I'm sure she'll give us her number and stuff. And so I'm going with the staff number. Does anyone else have any problem?
I'm definitely not gonna beat them up over not wanting to spend more money.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else in that section, Bill?
Uh, I don't think so. The only, the only, and this is, I don't know whether it goes under legal or where it goes. But we still have, I mentioned the, the aerial sewer line break. We still have outs, uh, don't know where that stands. I mean, are we looking at a fine on that thing? And if we're looking at a fine, is there some particular round or big number or small number that we should be putting in this budget to start taking about covering it?
I have no idea what it's about or where we're at. And I, I'm not at, at large to talk about that.
Okay. Well, I just, I, you know, I mean, because we picked up before the one on the wastewater treatment plant, when we had that issue was, what, 40 or 50,000 dollars?
On the what?
When we had the, uh, years ago, when, uh, had the issues with...
That money was used within Trophy Club, but it was 40,000. You're correct.
But, I mean, and so that had to come out of a budget someplace. And I just wondered if that was something we needed to be looking at.
Okay.
I don't have a number. I have no idea.
Yeah.
I, I mean, I don't either, to be honest. I couldn't really tell you a number. Um, but to answer your question, yes, I think there will be a fine. Um, and, it could be in this fiscal year.
Oh, this fiscal year? Well, well, other than that, I mean, you'd be looking at taking it out of, in this case, sewer reserves. I mean, it's just a thought or someplace. But anyway, if it's this fiscal year, then that's...
I mean, it could be this fiscal year or it could be next fiscal year.
Okay.
Okay. So, uh, anyone have a problem with the 150?
Concern noted.
Hey Kevin, Kevin, quick question. I found, I found the item that Bill was on. I have a, but is the 150,000 under legal for non-departmental? Is that strictly for the rate appeal? That's not for all legal expenses for next year, right?
That is for all legal expenses for next year.
Meetings, uh, PUC, whatever. And again, that's a staff number and I'm going with the staff.
All right. Let me just ask the question a different way. Out of the original 150 that was budgeted for the rate appeal, approximately 85 of that has already been spent. So you're basically saying, uh, 65,000 plus, uh, another 90,000 for other expenses is what's making up this line item?
Yeah, basically, they, what they said earlier was they expect for pretty much a majority of the cost for the rate appeal to occur in this year. So there should be very little cost for the rate appeal going into next year's budget.
Got it, got it. So the 150, for the most part, would represent just normal legal expenses.
Correct. Just the normal and typical mud expenses.
Got it. Thank you.
And if there, if there are expenses over what you budgeted, there, um, and, and you win the rate challenge, there will be a way to, uh...
Recover.
Recover those, those legal fees. So you would just put it on the bill and then you would have to amend the budget anyway.
Well, I, I guess I, I guess I should at least ask this question. Uh, uh, if we move forward with tax-based bonds to fund our 18 million dollars remaining in, uh, in revenue, uh, how will we cover legal action if Madat decides to sue the TCEQ again if the thing gets approved?
I, I, I don't, I don't know if we can anticipate that.
You can't foresee what someone's gonna do unless you know it. We're dealing with what we know, facts. That's what we worked a budget off of. Okay? Is everyone fine with the legal? Jim Hayes?
Yes.
Okay. Greg?
Yes.
I am. Bill? Yes, no?
I'll, I'll defer to see what the year brings.
Yes or no with the 150?
I personally think it's light, but...
Yes or no, please?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Moving on. We're gonna go to capital outlet. Well, let's, can we, how long?
Kevin?
Yes?
You, you didn't ask me for my opinion.
I know what you did. You, you talked about it. Go ahead. What's your opinion?
I think it's a little light, too.
Okay. Uh, yes or no? That's a no?
That's a no.
Okay, no. So we got three, two. Thank you. Okay, let's, can we go through capital outlay real quick or is it gonna take a while? Because we have lunch ready.
I think basically capital outlays is just discussion, understanding what the items are.
Okay. We'll do it real quick.
What was that number? G, GFL?
It's, uh, page...
F A on page 15.
Page 15, Jim.
GFA, okay.
Hey Kevin, you're still dealing with 107,000 dollars is in capital outlays? Is that what you're talking about?
No, we're just talking about generically about...
It's a whole page.
The whole page. We're gonna look at it.
Yeah.
The whole page, just to make sure there aren't any questions there.
Right.
Okay, that's on schedule what?
It's GFA. Golf, Foxtrot, Alpha.
I, I will go, I'll go to that page. Thanks.
Okay, go ahead. Director Rose?
Well, I just wanted, just, uh, discussion probably on, just to understand each one of them. We've already been through the administration. We've got a, uh, three-quarter ton truck. We're gonna keep the current bed on the truck or it's gonna move to another truck. Do we do, uh, purchases through, uh, buy board or, okay?
We have several different contracts that we look at and, um, get really the best price off the best contract. Cause even within the contracts, they vary year to year.
I would ask how old the vehicle is, but working with city vehicles, age has absolutely nothing to do with the number of hours on an engine. So that's, discussion's over with.
Okay, staying with the water theme. And Mike, can you explain the capital outlays on the maintenance and repair side?
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, the pump for the water plant, obviously, that's the big one that we talked about in the meeting. So everybody's familiar with that, correct?
Right.
Uh, the Sunset Water Lines, we have a problematic line on Sunset that goes around a cul-de-sac that we've had quite a few main breaks on. And the line is actually higher than a house that sits on there. It's...
Very bad soil in that area.
Yeah. So what we're gonna do is just eliminate that cul-de-sac and just straight line, that line across that cul-de-sac and just run a tap over for the two meters that are in there. So it's more of a, I guess preventative maintenance or, you know, we've got, I wouldn't say preventative maintenance, but just more like, uh, getting it fixed before it becomes such a big, big issue.
Preventive.
Saying, saying that, if you cross the line, didn't we do the same thing down on Skyline, too? Um, because they were having that break. I remember that somehow we...
Yeah, we had it.
Heard of it. And if we do that, you're saying you're gonna run their, uh, taps from our line and to their meter in their yard, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll still be responsible for that tap line coming off the main to the
For that tap, it'll be a plastic newer colored line.
That's fine. Okay, you on the, uh...
In-line valve.
14-inch inline valve?
14-inch inline valve. I visited with Jennifer about this. This is, uh, a big want and a need. The 14-inch line running down to Indian Creek from the start here at the four-way stop does not have a valve on it. And it is an AC pipe. So if we ever had any problems or anything, it needed to isolate that line right now, we cannot do it. So this is, this is something that...
Cautionary.
This is a design deficiency.
Yes. And so now we're coming back and trying to...
Do you know of any others around the system while, while we're on this one? Did it come to your mind?
Oh, I mean, if we sit down, I'm sure we could probably go through a whole list of stuff.
Yeah. And we're checking these valves periodically because I, I know there's, in the past, on water line breaks, we've gone to turn water off. I think the last one was on Lee Court or something. You had to go like down the road because it was frozen up or...
Yes. And we've had, we've actually replaced those valves.
Yeah. I was gonna say, we've, um, for their benefit, we've had in our budget each year over the past few years, some dollar value to go replace valves or, or even, there's been some new installations of places like this where there, it was not possible to isolate areas without, you know, basically cutting off the water of half the town or something. You wanna be able to minimize who's, who gets shut down if you're isolating. So that's, that, he calls it a want, and I don't call it a want at all. That is very much needed. That, that's a huge, that's gonna cut a lot of people off if you can't get that water turned off there at Indian Creek.
But we have, uh, a reserve someplace for valve failures. I mean, that's kinda...
I put it all into this one this year. The last probably, what, three or four years or something like that, we've had valve replacements. We've been spending about 50,000 dollars a year on valve replacements.
Like, like they were doing on the uniforms, we've just kept an amount going through the capitals to replace valves over time. And at each year, as they're working valves, we do, you know, locate new ones that might need to be repaired next year.
But without going back to the other section of budget and calling it out, it does exist.
Yes.
That's all I need. Thank you.
If you look in the last year budgets and capital, you'll see valve replacements.
Okay. We've gone, we've gone through the admin part. Everybody's good on that.
Wastewater purchases. Yeah.
Administrative purchases. We're good with that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Wastewater purchases now. Carl?
We talked about the water, yeah.
Just go through them, each of them or?
Yeah.
Ask questions. Okay.
You talked about the lawnmowers. So I'll just get that.
Uh, Blacko, Backo, uh, we have one that's, uh, that's actually 23 years old. Um, and we need a new one because to move all the sludge and move everything we need to have everything we use it for, basically.
Okay.
Um, a generator. We need one of those in case we lose electricity in any of the lift stations. We need something we can move to what lift station we needed to, to where we can have the pumps working.
And this will be on a trailer bed or put in the back of a truck or what?
Okay. Do we have other portable generators? I know we bought, we put the, got the big generator out at the waste treatment plant. You've got a port, you've got a backup generator over here in the water, water plant.
No, we don't have that one anymore.
We've got a backup generator at the water plant. It's stationary.
Oh, I thought he was talking about the portable.
No, well, I was, I was just wondering...
We do have a backup, uh, stationary. Yes, I'm sorry.
But, uh, but is...
Lift station.
I'm sorry?
We only have one at the lift station.
Only one of the lift stations has a stationary.
At the lifts, at the wastewater treatment plant. I mean, you've got a backup generator out there.
Yes.
Both generator and at the, uh, lift station and at the wastewater plant.
Okay, so we have two, but they're fixed?
We have 10 lift stations that if we lose power in all those, we need something that can go and turn the power back on to those.
Yeah. I understand that. So I'm, I'm, but my point is, is turning the power on to those, aren't they, how would you tie into, you can go to in, each individual lift station. I understand that. Bring your portable generator, tie it in and power that lift station.
Yes.
But we're, we only have, but we only have then one portable, we don't have a portable generator now.
Not at all.
Oh, well, obviously, that's a...
So you're okay with it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
We do, we do have the VAC truck, like, I think, kinda answered your question. You We do, we do have the VAC truck, like, I think, kinda answered your question. You can pump from one to the next, and there's a, a wet well that holes. So you're pumping it to the next, and the next, and the next, so that, and then you can also use the VAC truck to, you know, suck out of one so they can kinda keep the sewage moving, I guess is what I'm getting at. But not without at least one portable generator, and I think I would encourage you to look at maybe even a second one next year. We've talked about trying to get stationary at the different lift stations, but it's very, very costly. So at a minimum, getting the portables.
I, when you, when you look at this generator, because of the lesson that we've learned or understand on the water treatment plant, where we've got a generator that can't pick up the load, can't pick up the fixed, is it the fixed or the variable?
It's the fixed.
It's the fix, can't pick, can't, because of the instantaneous demand, we need to make absolutely certain that your portable generator can handle the loads at all of those stations.
Yes.
Okay, I, you know, just don't wanna buy something that goes, well, it won't work at lift station seven.
Yeah, maintenance and repairs?
The influent pumps, uh, with the upgrade that we have, we, they're replacing two of our pumps. The three and four we need to replace, because, uh, we've had a lot of problems with those, with, uh, maintenance and stuff. I assumed, which is wrong, I thought with the upgrade, they're gonna replace all those, one, two, three, and four. The only place three and four needs to be done, because one and two is not getting done.
Okay, so this is for three and four, or is it for one and two? Because you have-
One and two's getting done, and three and four's not getting done.
Actually, that's my problem right there, because they're actually doing three and four. I need to put that as one and two.
Okay, so that should say one and two.
Okay.
So this is for the influ, influent pumps?
Yes.
Okay, digester blower?
With the digester, same thing with that. Uh, the blowers are very old there, and they've been, a lot of maintenance done to those. Uh, the problem of it is, is when we upgrade the whole wastewater plant, our sludge is gonna be a lot thicker than it was in the past. When they actually go to the digesters, the blowers we have now are not gonna be able to do what needs to be done.
Okay, so they're just basically wore out and weak?
Yes.
And they're gonna get carried forward.
So how many, this, this reads singular digest blower, but there's actually, you said plural blowers. So there's more than one? There's three, okay?
There's actually four of them. One's a spare, but three is actually makes everything run.
Because of that plural digester blowers?
Okay.
There's more than one?
Yes.
So my question, you say that you have three, and there's a backup. The backup is going to be sized for the current load demand, probably, so should you really be looking at replacing four rather than just three?
We're actually, I put on here, just replace three. I'd like to replace four, but actually make the thing work correctly. Three will make it work. If they fail, we need the fourth one.
And, and when you put it online, it's too small?
No, the, the new ones I'm getting are bigger.
No, no, but if one of the new ones fail, goes down, your backup one is too small.
Yes, correct.
It, it would work, it would work for a short term until the other ones fixed or replaced.
Repeat that, I'm sorry?
If you use the one that you're using for a backup, uh, Bill's question was, it's, it doesn't meet the specs that the new ones will, the higher demand.
The new ones I will purchase, but will.
But will the one you have as a backup meet in a, a short-term basis, or no?
No.
Then you need four.
Why didn't you request four?
I'm not gonna pick on it. You get four. Your number is four.
How much is the additional blower?
If you add that, a fourth one.
Must be about twenty-two, right?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll bump that up to twenty-two then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sixty-five plus twenty-two is eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Good.
And that is for four blowers, right?
And the rea, and the reason for the video is because the new sludge is gonna be heavier, and to get it through the digester, you gotta have the blowers to make it work.
Okay, lift station controls, one and two.
Good catch.
Um, we're actually replacing the controls on the lift stations because of the age of them. And also the equipment inside those control panels are very old and wore out, so we're replacing them. We already did, uh, two of them this year, four and five. Now we're doing the one and two, and just basically go forward with that kinda stuff by up, upgrading everything where it's newer.
We have a total of seven lift stations?
Nine.
Nine. So we've accomplished two, four and five. One and, we got one and two.
Ten, lift station twenty.
We just, number, keep going. Okay, so when you, when you look, let me ask you this. When you look at the ones that you're going to replace, how do you determine that I need to do this one and this one, rather, strictly on vintage?
Yes.
Okay?
And I think that is something that needs to be included in that sewer study.
Yeah.
Is, uh, looking at the lift stations and having the engineer say, you need to be planning for X, Y, and Z on those lift stations.
Because if we're picking up hydrogen sulfide corrosion in our electrical components, it's an issue.
Right.
Okay, uh, Su, Oakmont Sewer.
We are actually videoing that right now to verify that everything needs to be replaced with that. Um, everything we looked at now looks really well, real, really good. That, all the engineers I've talked to in the schools I've been through, they're saying this is the way to go, instead of, that way you don't have to rip up everyone's yard to replace the whole thing. You can do it-
Slipline.
Yes, replacing it that way, because you don't have to mess anything up.
And this is at the far end of Oakmont, where it starts going downhill?
The oldest part, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so-
Again, that's all goes up and down.
So basically, the problem with the Oakmont sewer line is that we're, it's, is it cracking, breaking? We're, we're having obstruction pros, problems, right?
Actually, right now, we're not. Uh, last year, we actually replaced, uh, three spots on that, and it was very expensive just to do those, three. Doing this direction is actually cheaper than actually digging somebody's yard with the backhoe and replacing it that way.
Yeah, slipline's a lot cheaper than trench.
And easier, yes.
Yeah.
But you're gonna have that new backhoe. You need to dig something up.
We got plenty at the wastewater plant, trust me.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of that's that old clay tile pipe, too, that's-
Oh, our sewer line's clay tile?
Yeah, right there in the Oakmont area.
Anybody else have any questions on capital outlay?
Yes, I have one.
Okay.
Uh, uh, Jennifer, uh, the, the, a portable generator that could in fact keep our lift wells going, cost how much money?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight thousand.
Yeah, we, about forty-eight thousand.
We have one today, is that correct?
No.
No, it, it was the Towns.
And so we're buying one.
All right, so my, my question is, and I, I, I'm sorry, I got distracted when Jennifer was doing her explanation a minute ago. Someone walked in and said something to me. Uh, is there, is there no concern on anyone's part that we should own our own generator?
Yeah, we're buying one.
That's what we're doing.
We're buying one. It's, it's on the-
Where is it? Where is the line item? I don't see it.
Gulf Foxtrot Alpha on their wastewater purchases.
On the scheduled GFA, which is the capital outlays, under the wastewater purchases-
Oh, I'm sorry, forgive me. I see it now. I'm sorry. I had, we, we spent so much time talking on the other stuff, I had to space the page over, and I totally missed it. Thank you so much.
Okay.
I'm happy.
No other questions on that?
No.
Okay, let's just go through the, the pages if anyone has any questions on-
I wanna, um, and I'm, I apologize, I'm not trying to back all the way up to water or anything. It, this'll just take a second, but I did mean to point out to y'all, back in the water, on the meter changeout program, I think later y'all will have a question about this, so let's just kinda go over it real quick, that, um, it's sixty-five oh fifty-three. Just for your information, we'll be looking at replacing two-hundred-and-twenty-five of the profile heads this coming fiscal year? And, or installing them, and do you recall how many meter replacements it was gonna be?
This says fifteen. No, that's testing.
We went-
We talked about that, and the reason there's not a number is because it depends upon the size. And so as he is trying to figure out what size he wants to replace for this year, the price is gonna be different between the sizes, so we-
So you just kinda budgeted-
A dollar amount rather than by quantity, so that he can buy the meters he needs.
So maybe later then, Mike, you can, um, at a board meeting, present to them the, what you decide on, the, the meter changeouts that will be done. So they'll kinda get an idea of what percent will be replaced from the old meters, that we have a lot of meters in the system that are under registering. And they're just really old, and so we're, there's, it's kind of a two-part project that we're working on. One, to actually replace old meters, and then they get the profile heads if they don't have them. And then we're also trying to move everybody to these profile heads, which are the ones that we can data log, and we can see every, you know, fifteen minutes, or, you know, how much water they use, and that helps when they have the high usage. So I, I apologize, I meant to go over that when we were back on water, but we do still, we're keeping that program going so that ev, eventually, we'll be in a really good position of just, you know, when, when meters reach their life, then we're ready. We're just replacing those again.
Base units as opposed to heads.
Jennifer, in our total system, approximately how many meters still need the profile heads on them? Percentage-wise?
Percentage-wise, I would probably say twenty-five, thirty percent.
Yeah, it, it was, it's about, I'm gonna say thirty percent, because it was like-
And, and, and are you still following the, the path you've been doing? You taking it a street at a time and upgrade them?
Yes, we kinda prioritize and we're, and we're placing them a street at a time.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's just go through the remaining pages. Uh, we're starting at page, uh-
Sixteen?
Sixteen, does that sound right?
Yeah, I think that's the next one.
Everybody agree? Okay, we're on page sixteen. Tax debt payments. Do, do y'all wanna take a break now, since there's lunch out there, and then we can go through that, the rest of this real quick, or what?
I can take a break.
I, I have to leave at twelve-thirty, so we can take a break, but I have to leave at twelve-thirty.
I think the big items are done.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think-
I don't know if there's a whole lot to talk about here.
Okay.
Why don't we just keep going? Maybe we'll be done at twelve-thirty.
Okay, uh, tax debt payments. Does anyone have any questions on that table? Wait a minute, wait a minute. Anyone?
Uh, I do have a on the second one down, the twelve series, it, this is just what was the original project. We talked about it was refunded. The others seemed, uh, seemed to indicate, uh, well, the two outside ones, the two, top and bottom one says what they were used for. The two middle ones don't say what they were used for. I just thought that there was a tad bit information there that might have been missing. What was, what was the twenty-twelve tax? Unlimited tax bonds twenty-twelve, what was that, what was the project for that?
No, the twenty-twelve was actually a, a re-
It was a refund. It was a reissue, but what was the original issue?
Yeah, it was two thousand and two, I think.
Kevin, what account number you're on?
I think that had to do with the old wastewater plant.
It's on a schedule, Jim. GF dash B one, tax debt.
You think it had to do with what, Renee?
I think it had to do with the old wastewater plant upgrade.
It did, and then it, I think it was like infrared, and-
Okay.
One of those was infrared system.
Just, 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 you know, just-
Was the second one, was the second one also a wastewater treatment plant?
That's what they think it was.
Or the third one? I'm sorry, the third one, same thing?
No, that was something else, because they didn't do anything in oh-three and oh-five on the wastewater plant.
Okay, it's not, it's not critical. I can continue.
Did they maybe build one of the gr, isn't that one of the ground storage tanks?
No, that was two thousand six or seven, I think. And that was a revenue, anyway, I think.
Oh, okay.
But I'm, I'm pretty sure, one is when they, uh, redid the plant, they added, uh, some additional equipment. I don't know if it clarified.
That's all right. It's, it's not-
The other one was the UV lighting. We, we went away from using chlorine.
That's right, I did do that.
Okay, anything else on that page?
No, we can move on.
Okay, revenue debt. It's, uh, scheduled GF, B as in boy, two. Revenue debt payment. Anyone have any questions on that? Everybody should be familiar with those two items. Okay, anything, Bill?
No.
Anything, Jim?
Nope.
Jim Thomas? Nothing, okay. Now we're gonna go to-
Kevin, I had you on mute because I'm trying to find it, and I just brought it back up. I still haven't, I'm not located.
Just go to your schedules now. We're on projected water use, scheduled-
GF, GF B two, I'm, I'm in the front.
Now we're on the next schedule.
Now we're on C. We're on the next page.
All right, give me the page, the title.
Projected water use, scheduled GF dash C. Should be the next scroll down table.
GF dash C, Gulf Foxtrot dash Charlie.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, the, from what I understand, the way they started was that was the three-year average. Is that correct? Terry, that forty-one sixty-five?
Yes.
Okay, so they took whatever last three meters, they averaged it out, and then that's how they go down the line, correct?
Yeah, I just have one question on that. What's the significance forty-one sixty-five, forty-one seventy-five, forty-one ninety? What is?
Those are the meter counts. If you turn the page that you can't read, because they had to make it too small to fit.
Okay.
Those are the past three years, the meters for the past three years averaged together.
At that month, for like, example, October, for three years averaged together, there was four thousand one hundred and sixty-five.
Okay, so it's by month. Okay, I was trying to figure out-
Yeah, that's by month.
Month here.
No, that makes sense, but I was sitting this like, well, how, how do we know what-
I did the same thing.
I have, I have a question, a general question again.
Okay.
On the, the other data columns, uh, is well water covered in those calculations? Is well water included in the average water use per meter and all of that?
Yes, that's, that's what was billed.
It's everything pumped. It's everything pumped out of the water plant.
So yes.
Okay, and then down at the bottom, uh, lower right column talks about a three-point-zero-four percent increase, a three-point-zero-one percent increase. How were those percentages derived?
From the Fort Worth, um, annual, they do, they provide us an annual report, uh, their wholesale rate study, I guess you could call it.
I read it last night. I can verify those numbers.
Yeah.
Can you, and talking about that, can you, at our next meeting or prior to that, could you send out that table that you created a while back that said Fort Worth had this much increase in this year, and this is how much?
Yeah, I'm, I was gonna, um, include that in my presentation for the public hearing next week.
But can you send it to the directors?
Yes, I will not be completing that till probably Sat, Sunday, but I will email my presentation out to the board in advance.
Great.
So, long story short, is we have something hard copy from Fort Worth that says, these are your numbers.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I needed.
Okay, next one can't read, we can't read, we can't do. All it is is historic information. Let's find the next one. Next one that I can see that we can look at, we talked about, is uniforms, correct, Bill?
Wait, wait a minute.
Okay.
I'm still on the, on the page that you can't read.
Okay, what?
Cause you have to blow it up to size twenty-seven.
What page?
Uh, GFD.
Okay. Jim Thomas, we're on projected water re, revenue schedule, Gulf Foxtrot Delta.
Correct, I've got it.
You probably have to blow it up to about two-hundred percent to see it. And my questions are all down at the bottom. Is, is that center column that says late fees? Is that a multi-year trend?
No, it's the past twelve months.
Okay, so that's twelve months, all right. And then I had on the information on the two little sections above that, uh, a question about combining the chart. What's, for five-eighths, what's the current meter count and monthly revenue? Because that's not shown.
The, um, it's showing the base charges, um-
But my point is, if you look at the, it says increment above base, that, that chart, those are all numbers, that's one inch through six inch. But we don't have any information, similar information for the five-eighths, five-eighths and three-quarters. But we don't have any similar information on the number of me, current number of meter counts.
Didn't you say we didn't have any three-quarters?
That's to calculate the dollars there, Bill. That's why you don't have the five-eighths inch meter. It's to calculate the dollars for the increment above base.
Above theirs.
Okay.
That's why you don't see it, because-
Okay, well, I was just, I was looking, I was looking for a meter count, is what I was looking for.
Right, and you're not gonna see that. It's, it's just being used in order to calculate the extra dollars.
The extra amount over what the five-eighths is.
I see what, I understand what you're saying now. Gotcha.
So it kinda starts at the one inch, in other words?
Yeah, it's an accounting and finance issue.
Anything that goes in-
It's like, yeah.
Anything that goes in houses today is one inch, correct, for the building code?
Yes.
Okay, thanks. Okay, you done with that page, or you still have questions on that page?
I'm, I'm finished, thanks.
Okay, page twenty. Anything on that page, Bill?
Standby. Gotta get back to standard-sized presentation here, so I can see what's going on.
You are gonna be able to go back standard.
The only thing that I note on that, on that page, which is interesting, it's a title. It's called projected retail wa, wastewater sales for fiscal year fifteen.
I noticed that, too. Terry, you forgot to change the fiscal year.
We need to come forward a couple of years now. That's not a, that's not- That's not a, that's not a mistake.
Hey.
That's so tiny, I can see how it's missed.
Okay, I, I do have a question on, uh, the amount from base and the amount from usage. Chris Eckert's got a statement that the California Urban Water Conservation Council recommends that no more than thirty percent of revenue should be captured within the fixed portion of the rate structure. This guy is thirty-seven percent. Nothing else, I just wanted to bring it to your attention.
Okay, duly noted.
Okay.
Man, what happened to the golf course this year? They really let us down, didn't they?
Uh, wait till this month comes out.
Yeah.
Anything else on nineteen?
No.
Okay, we're on, uh, twenty, we already did, we just did that one.
That was twenty.
Twenty-one, uniforms we did, correct?
Yep.
Uh, travel and training.
We bought cheaper shirts.
You want your name in the world? Okay, uh, travel and training, scheduled GF dash G, anything?
Standby.
I'm standing by.
Miscellaneous, on the administration. Uh, bottom one, uh, says miscellaneous travel legal.
For like going to rate hearing, PUC rate hearings or-
Okay, okay, good. That's all I have there.
Okay. Salary, we already went through that table.
Yep, talked about that.
Uh, salary worksheet, went through that table, correct? We're on page twenty-five, benefits.
I'm on twenty-six, I have a question on that, um-
What page?
Twenty-six.
Okay, I'm, I'm at twenty-five right now.
On twenty-five?
We have anything on twenty-five? Uh, benefits worksheet. Okay, moving to twenty-six. Director Rose?
More benef-, it's a, probably a note that pertains to all of them. It says for all departments except fire, a ten percent in employee benefits was budgeted. Is this an increase in the level of benefits, or is this an increase in the cost for the same benefit?
In the cost for the same benefit, because we, we're on a calendar year, so we don't go out for our new benefits till October, when this budget's already prepared. We won't have those final rates till like November, and then we would be able to adjust in the mid-year budget amendment.
I, I just needed to understand exactly whether it was a-
We do shop, and so, you know, so far it's been the same, you know, Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we do look at others, so I wanna point that out because it's maybe something different after the shopping is done.
In this ma-, uh, it says for all departments except for fire. Why, why are they excluded? It's probably, it's a town.
Cause the town does theirs, and they give us the amount.
Yeah, that's what I asked Chief Arada, if they were still on TML, they went to Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Okay. I, just confused me, why do we call it out? Since they're not ours, do we? Just kinda curious, it's a, it drew my attention because I thought maybe I was missing something.
No, we have a fire budget in here, so if someone's trying to tie, like, we, we pull our, if you look in each department, it pulls over to this schedule.
Mm-hmm.
Fire doesn't pull over to this schedule.
Okay, and so you, okay, okay.
Okay.
That, okay, it makes sense.
Okay, next one is, uh, retirement worksheet, scheduled GF dash J as in Juliet. Anyone have anything? Bill? Holding pattern, or?
No, not even that.
Go to Didi Mononhold.
Yeah. Okay, next one is electric gas, we went over that one, correct?
Yes.
Information technology, we kinda hit that one, does anyone have any other questions on that one?
Standby.
GF dash L, page twenty-nine?
Yes, thirty, I'm on thirty-one.
On twenty-nine?
Yes.
You can see we have a dollar amount on twenty-nine of six thousand dollars for main phone number and long distance fifty percent shared.
Right.
Our AT&T contract is coming up for renewal. We are trying to get a hold of them to, to see what the new amount's going to be. Um, we had to go with the current amount because we just don't know.
Okay, and we're gonna stay with the AT&T, did we?
Well, that's, they're the current provider for the main phone system here. And so, our long distance rate is what's going to change.
Okay.
Okay.
Should go down, oughta be free.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, uh, we're on page thirty now of the information technology, anybody have anything on that? I see nothing, uh, hear nothing, on thirty-one, Director Rose, you said you had something on that?
I do, on the, at the bottom, on the, below communication modules, there is an asterisk that says latitude, laptop, and a bunch of things listed. My question is, what's this?
Okay, this is, you have to go back to page thirty.
Then the fire.
No, it's not on the fire, it's the mud hardware. If you go, it's the second item from the bottom. On page thirty, it says, uh, replacement hardware, and you see the asterisk C list below, eighty-two forty-four. And then when you turn to page thirty-one, there it is, eighty-two forty-four, what makes up the eighty-two forty-four?
So you're buying two new laptops, two new-
Replacements.
The M three has set us up with a standard replacement schedule, so that every year we are replacing, as they get three or four years old, I don't remember what the cutoff was, it, it's scheduled to be replaced so many of the laptops here in the office and whatever else, so this is what they've provided us for this year.
Okay, with those laptop replacements, that's gonna come with the software that should be on there?
I'm sorry, what?
With the laptop replacements, that includes the turnkey laptop, it'll have all the software?
Yes.
So there's no software?
There's magic.
No, um, whatever, when they provide us with that quote, that should be everything to put that right into work.
Okay. Do you, did that answer your question?
Yeah, I volunteer mine to be first. I, I, I pull it off onto a thumb drive, do it on my Mac, and then bring it back, because this thing will flip screens and everything else on you while you're looking at it.
Um, any, anything else on information technology? Jim, do you have anything, Jim Thomas?
No, no, I'm fine.
Okay, and we're to page thirty-two. We talked about that, correct?
I do have a comment, comment or two on it, um-
I have one quick comment, can we not use red anymore?
I, I have a comment, yeah, on the, on the one, the sheet we can't read, can we not use light blue? So, cause if we're gonna make it really, really small, I could read the block, I couldn't read the light blue.
The reason it's light blue and I can change color, but the reason it's light blue is those are numbers that I have to change. And so it's blue to make me pay attention, to know that I have to change those numbers, but I can change it.
Yeah, can we go to a different color other than a light color?
Yes.
Jim Thomas, yes, GF, GF dash M.
Yeah, thank you, cause the page numbers don't show on my system.
Okay. Director Rose, you had something?
Uh, only, this is just an, just a general statement, uh, I think we've over budgeted a little bit in this. I went and pulled gas prices and diesel prices, uh, projected for next year from the U.S. Energy Information Association. Twenty-seventeen gas will be, they're projecting two twenty-six, and diesel they're projecting two seventy, so uh, we're a little over projected on our amounts, I would say, cautionary. Then there's a comment here that says ten percent increase. And I was wondering, because that's the same, is it just budgeting, we just doing ten per, because I looked at previous year's budgets? And it, it's like that statement's frozen on the page.
The reason we do that is because, do you remember the year, I don't know, has it been three or four years ago? Where gas prices went from under two dollars to almost four dollars? That's why that's in there, it's in order to give us some consistency, so that if the gas prices do this, we've at least got some kind of an inflation factor in there. And we actually, I went through these line items with the chief, the fire chief, and with Mike, and with Carl, by department, by vehicle, by gallonage, by dollars. We went through each and every line item in order to see if we were, where we thought we would need to be. So this is what we ended up with.
So, I have a question for you, uh, just the other day, the, uh, the Saudis are diversifying their economy, and they're selling off part of their oil assets, and so now they're gonna meet with the rest of OPEC to, uh, to look at trying to reduce the floor on the price wall, all a true story, did you guys include that in the budget amount?
No, I'm sorry, I missed that.
It'll never flow through OPEC.
We'll note that, we'll, we'll note that on your next merit.
Okay. Um, anybody else, you have anything else on that page, Bill?
No, I think, I think twelve hundred dollars for an oil change is pretty expensive, but there must be some basis for it.
Well, diesel, yeah, diesel.
Yeah, that's the, that's the big, um, big vehicles, right, yeah.
That's more than just a regular oil change, that's like all the fluids.
All, all the hydraulics and stuff.
They wipe the windshield down too. Okay, that looks like we're done, can we just get a quick summary? I know we changed the, we added a blower, is that correct on?
Yeah, I was gonna say, let me run through, and, and then I have a question for y'all as well. Um, we're gonna look at the, reducing the penalties for trash and drainage, or whatever I worked out with Stephen. Something will, that will be changed, that penalties. Um, they're gonna see what's going on with the PID TCQ fees, that weren't showing that they're paid. We're gonna change DM discretionary to GM discretionary.
How much is that gonna cost?
Kevin, I'm sorry, Josh, where are y'all now?
We're just going through. She's just doing the summary of all the things that we agreed to change within the pack, so we're not on any particular page.
In the fire budget, I had to make sure that those were the right numbers for Blue Cross Blue Shield, but, um,
He came back.
Chief Arada came by, back, and they were, so I marked that off. Um, in the capital outlays, we increased the digesters from three to, digest blowers from three to four, and increased the amount from sixty-five to eighty-seven thousand. On page twenty, scheduled GFE, Terry's gonna change it from fiscal year fifteen to seventeen.
Where was that, Jennifer?
It's a very small print.
It's very small, on page twenty.
On page twenty?
Yeah.
Yeah.
GFE, um, GFF, we're gonna cut some of Carl's uniforms, since they don't need them.
Yeah.
Yeah, get a lower cost provider.
Yeah, nothing on that, that was a joke. Um, that's done, that's the same thing as before. Um-
I think we're gonna come out perfect.
And that is all, that's the changes.
Do you mind, just putting it in an email format and just, you know, sending it to all the directors?
Yes.
To summarize, so we're all, we're all on the same page when it comes to approval. And I just wanna make a comment to Jennifer and her staff, you did an exceptional job putting all these numbers together, I didn't really think we had a lot of changes on it, so it's a very good job.
I have, Jennifer mentioned penalties, I have a question on that. Uh, the, I've seen a little bit of pushback on our twenty-five dollar fee for rate, getting a printout. And I don't know if we include that number in our budget or not, you know, when you, data log.
That would be in a rate structure, a rate.
Okay.
In that, that would be the problem.
Because I'm just looking at maybe-
Ten dollars?
Five, what if, you know, I mean, it's a cu-, call it a customer service, whatever you wanna call it.
It's, most cities give you, I think South Lake, I was looking at, ten dollars one time, and then after that, it, it would go to Ireland.
But, yeah.
Yeah, that would be in the rate order discussion.
Have we ever actually collected a twenty-five dollar fee from anyone for a data log?
Yes.
We have, okay.
Yeah.
I actually got one, they didn't charge me, that was before I got on the board, so there was no favoritism.
Last year when everyone was, last year when everyone was, uh, you know, raising the question of high water usage, Jennifer waived it for-
For everyone.
Yeah, for like thirty days or something like that.
Before y'all have that discussion, when it comes back to the rate order and y'all talk about, I think you might wanna be aware of the several steps that go into getting one. I mean, we have to send staff out to pull the data, they have to bring it back and manipulate it. Then the utility billing has to go in there and put it together in the correct order, contact the customer. And so there is quite a bit that goes into it.
Again, come up with it, what that cost is, and that's what we will have, but I-
And that discussion is probably for another day.
Yeah.
And, and manipulate is not a word that I would use.
We're all done.
Format, is that a better, format, format, format it appropriately.
I'm gonna manipulate the number.
Yes.
As you wind it down prior to lunch, there's just three quick things. Uh, Jennifer, it's not in your to-dos, but one of the to-dos is for me to get back to you guys with, uh, some information on Wise Guys. Uh, so I will take, I'll do that. Uh, it is not a, uh, we're not agenda to do this now, nor is it, nor is it agenda for next Tuesday, but I would like for everybody to think about this twenty-five dollar charge. We had a lot of problems last August, I perceive they're gonna come back again this August.
Jim, I hate, Jim, I hate to stop you, but you're kinda out of order on the budget. And we, we did talk about it, and I think we all agree to bring it back as a, as a-
Yeah, put it on your gen-
So I know where you're going, but for budget-
That's all, that's all I'm saying, Kevin, is, is I didn't realize we'd agreed to do that.
Okay, thank you, and, uh, I'm gonna, excuse me?
Thank you, I have one more. What was your last one, Jim?
Yeah, look, before you guys break, has nothing to do with the budget, it's for, it's mainly for Greg before he bails out. Uh, I contacted AWBD this week, Greg, I've got the name of a company that can come in and, and serve as interim manager, and I've got the name of two search firms, I'll pass that on to you and Kevin as the committee, so y'all can follow up as appropriate.
Yeah, just send it to us, and then we'll let, uh, we'll let Kevin get back on, send that to us, Kevin, you wanna, you got anything else?
No.
I'll send it to, I'll send it to both of you since y'all are on the grid.
Jennifer has one thing.
Okay, so after this meeting, I'm going to summarize the things that we went through that are to be changed, and I'm gonna email them out to you all. We're then going to focus on the, the agenda for Tuesday. And right now, I have a placeholder for fiscal year seventeen budget on there. Is there, do you want that to remain on there?
Yes.
And you, you won't need a new updated budget by Tuesday, correct? We'll do that in September. But we can leave the item on there in case there's something that you think about after the meeting that you wanna address budget-wise. We'll leave it on there. I mean, I'm asking.
Yeah, that's fine.
I'm thinking, I'm thinking adopt the budget at the next meeting, on, on, at our next regular meeting, I mean, it's done.
Yeah, it's done, with, and just note that, that the tweaks that need to be made.
Do the tweaks, and adopt it.
They're giving us a new pack.
Do you have any problem with that?
There's a resolution that has to be done, which we can do, but there's about five different resolutions that we do in September. And we do, and starting-
What we can do is adopt the budget and then do the resolutions in September, correct?
Well, you adopt the tax rate too.
Well, that, that's what I mean.
You have to adopt the ba- budget first, before you can set the tax rate, there's several different resolutions that are all done, we've always done it at September meeting, nothing, I guess we can go ahead and do it.
But if we adopt, we adopt the budget, I agree, there's a timeline for doing the tax rates.
Right.
Okay, but we can, we've done the budget. We can, we can adopt this budget, and then we can do the tax rates for the tax sections.
Okay, well, I'll have to get the resolution done up today to go out in the packet today.
Okay, so we can do that, um, we, we can have the, adopt the budget on the Tuesday meeting. Terry, you'll have to make the changes real quick in here. Um, I guess one concern I have, I'm not sure where we're gonna get the extra twenty-two thousand for his, um, but we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll get that done. Um, okay, so we'll have then-
Change the rates.
The, adopt the, the budget on the, um, next week's agenda.
Change the rates, it's a penny.
I, I gotta run, so, unless we-
Hey, I'll take it, wait, real quick on, on that, you said that you could find the twenty, whatever it was-
I'll find it, yes.
Out of a reserve or, or something like that, right? Okay, so the numbers won't change, it's just reallocating.
Yes.
Okay, fine, and I'll take a motion for, to adjourn?
I'll second it.
Okay, I'm making a motion, then I'll change that, I said I'll take one, but I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion made by Vice President Wilson, second by Director Rose, show of hands on adjournment? Uh, unanimous.
Well done.
We adjourned at twelve-thirty-seven.
You get four blowers.
Budget workshop, thank you, uh-